Gentlemen, everybody good? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Palm Coast Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May the 3rd, 2022. It is 6:00 PM, and we are in the community wing of City Hall. With that, I would ask you to please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Brancuino.
Here.
Councilmember Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Finelli.
Present.
Councilmember Clubus.
Present.
Mayor, all members are present.
Very good. Before I open public participation, I have some notes for the audience, and I would also ask each city council member to adjust their microphones so those that are listening online or virtually can hear clearly. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or from the table in the back where the directors are seated. Public participation shall be held in accordance with Section 286.0114 Florida statutes and pursuant to the city council's meeting policies and procedures. One, each speaker shall at the podium provide their name and may speak for up to three minutes. Two, the public may provide comments to the city council relative to matters not on the agenda at the times indicated in the agenda. Following any comments from the public, there may be discussion by the city council. Three, when addressing the city council on specific enumerated agenda items, speakers shall A) direct all comments to the mayor, B) make their comments concise and to the point, C) not speak more than once on the same subject, and D) not by speech or otherwise delay or interrupt the proceedings or the peace of the city council; E) obey the orders of the mayor or the city council; and F) not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments while addressing the city council, which pursuant to council rules shall be considered disorderly. Four, any person who becomes disorderly or who fails to confine his or her comments to the identified subject or business shall be cautioned by the mayor and thereafter must conclude his or her remarks on the subject within the remaining designated time limit. Any speaker failing to comply as cautioned shall be barred from making any additional comments during the meeting and may be removed as necessary for the remainder of the meeting. So with that, we have a full audience this evening, so I would like to open public participation now, and I would invite the first speaker to step forward and make public comment. Yes, sir.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. I know we're supposed to address our questions to the mayor, but, Mayor, I want you to please pay close attention to what I'm saying because you're probably going to have to confer with the city attorney on this one. The Green Lion Restaurant has had a lot of publicity, a lot of people have made comments about it, but I have a question that I need to have answered. So my question is...
Ms. McDonald, if I may, would you like to make your comment when we get to that agenda item? Because we'll be discussing, there'll be a staff report on the Green Lion.
Whatever you want, you're the boss.
I would prefer if we could keep it close to the agenda item, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, on any item that does not appear in tonight's agenda.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
My name's Wayne Friday. I live in R Section 27 Rainstone, and I'm addressing a little bit of unruly people that are back there disturbing the peace, and there's been multiple calls to the police about motorcycles that are untagged riding up and down the streets, and they're disturbing a lot of people back there, and there's a lot of trash, and I myself participate in picking up the trash. I want to be part of the solution here, and I could see a bad trend. There's a lot of development coming up real quick and a lot of people coming in, and some of the people back there are just being unruly with vehicles and motorcycles, and it's usually young teens. And I asked for help from the police officers there, and they're coming by at night when you're sleeping, and they come by and try to intimidate you a little bit, they look at you like there's nothing you could do to me, and they make a game of it, it seems like. And I know that the police are trying to do the best they can because they have to catch them, but we just need a little more attention, I believe, in the R section. There's a lot of children back there, there's mothers that have, walking their children, people walking their dogs, and it's really a safety issue about how fast they go. I know that that one person was clocked at like 60 on a dirt bike back there, and it was so loud, and it's really just a safety issue, and I know everybody's doing the best they can, and I'm not, I don't want to be part of the problem here, but I would like to help, and I need help to help myself. So that's about all I got to say.
Very good. Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please.
Paula Lewis, C Section, Mayor Alvin. I have a question as far as limiting the amount of VRBOs that are in our community because just recently, within the past month or so, we ended up with two houses being sold that are now VRBOs. And with having a rapid turnover as far as rentals, we're opening ourselves up for group parties and not knowing who our neighbors are. We have block people who are supposed to help guide us through making sure that our neighborhoods stay safe, and when we have a constant turnover from a week or weekend or even a month, it's not exactly heartwarming.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Yes, sir.
Kirsten Simmons Drive. The garbage company, in the last six weeks, they have missed a lot of people in the C Section along Simron. When we call customer service, they say, well, we'll call them for you. The last time I told them, don't bother, I'll call you myself. I spoke to a route supervisor, and he said, the problem is, we're not paying people enough money, and most of them are previous convicts or jail records, and they don't want to work. So is the city going to address this with them?
So this is your time for public comment.
Okay.
We don't...
Well, I got two other things I want to bring up.
Okay.
I've been on a project with my good friend Al, who owns Simron Drive. You all have heard me talk multiple times. The Saturday, I was walking along the grass back toward my house that I live, what they call Death Valley. Two cars hugged the curve, and I screamed at them, move over. Both of them stopped, and because I'm the one who's been coordinating with the Flag of Police to get them out on the streets, and they've been great, they're on the average in that area four, five days a week, they said, next time, take a photo of their license plate and call the police, or call the police on the spot. There's one last thing that really bothers me in Palm Coast, and this isn't going to be easy to say, but I'm going to say it, and they think a lot of it comes from the Republican Party. Why are we letting certain people run for office with the backgrounds that they have? That's it.
I thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. Ms. Kershaw, you're going to make sure that the public comment cards are passed out to everyone. Thank you.
Mike Solura, I live in the C Section. I'm concerned about all the A and, excuse me, the breakfast and bath, I don't like talking in front of people, the Airbnbs. I'm concerned about them. There's a lot of them coming around. To me, they're running a business in a residential area that's zoned for residents, and it's also, it's, they're running a hotel in a residential area, to me. I know the city or counties are getting the tax money, but it's unfair to the neighborhood. Just over on Cold Spring, people were complaining about all the noise and all that, and, you know, I think that we should address that. When I tried to rent a place, a house, when my house was being finished, I was told that I couldn't do it unless it was a minimum of six months. Now, maybe that's changed, but they're running a business in a residential area, and I don't think it's zoned for that. I think that they're kind of breaking the law. I know it's not right, and I don't, I think most of people don't want that. Loud noise, I hear people, trash is being left behind, cars on the street, you know, you got people that don't live there, so they're coming and going. You don't know who's coming next door to you. It could be, you know, somebody looking to rob houses or something, just renting that place to case places out. So I'm concerned about that. I hope there's something they can do about it, and that's pretty much it.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
Hi, Mayor. I'm Patrick Henigan, and I'm from the R Section here in Palm Coast, and my thing is, is the motorcycles, the dirt bikes, and the speeding in the R Section is getting out of hand. There's a lot of kids playing. All it takes is for them to go out in the street, and somebody's going to get killed. I lost a child once. I know somebody's going to get killed. I don't see the law enforcement coming through at all. I'm there all day. I do not see law enforcement. I had them over here on the motorcycle issue. This has been going on for three weeks. I have pictures of them. I have pictures from my security system of these kids buzzing up and down the street, and the officer tells me he's the only one there in the R Section, okay? And they have to catch him. Okay? So I got them on picture. They can't do nothing about it. Somebody's going to get hurt, and with the speeding. It's fine with the sheriff on the busy roads, but in the back streets, these people are going crazy. There's a lot of influx for different people. I've been here for 10 years, and it's getting crazy. I would like to see more money on law enforcement and law enforcement patrolling. The kids, the speeders, they know the police are not back there. So it's getting crazy. Somebody's going to get hurt. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
John Erpelding, R Section. I got a few things I'd like to mention here. Number one is, where do you get the golf for 151% raise?
Please.
I'm on Social Security.
Excuse me, sir.
For the first time this year...
Please have respect for the speaker, so he'll have respect for you as well. Thank you.
That was respect. I agree.
Please, please, not for the rest of the audience.
I'm on Social Security.
Please continue.
Huh?
I said, please continue.
Whatever you said. I'm on Social Security. This year, I got, I really made out great. I got a $30 a month raise. I think I am somebody. 151%. I just want to know where to sign the recall petitions that are going to go out on y'all. Past that, the question is, animals in food sections of the grocery stores and restaurants. There is both a national and a state ordinance, codes against those, the animals. I was in Walmart the other day, and this guy had a pee pad. You know, they have pee pads for the animals. He had it in his cart, and he's got two animals in there, and he's petting on his animals, and he's picking up the corn, corn cobs, and he's petting his animal, picking up corn. Try and tell the managers, they don't do anything. If we have code enforcement, my question, I guess, on this is, is can code enforcement in the City of Palm Coast enforce state and federal code? If they can, I'd like them to enforce the codes against animals in the food sections of the grocery stores. Last but not least, I'll try and make this real quick. I don't know if there's anybody here that knows anything about it, but we're doing on a lot of building, huge amount of building in this city. I know from past experience, from where I come from, that in order to build a home, there is a minimum water requirement that you must show that you can supply that home. Code says it's 15 gallons or 75 gallons per person, or they figure roughly that there's any home that's built is for four people on the rule of thumb, which means that there's got to be 300 gallons of water for that home to be built. My question is, where is the water going to come from? We ain't got it. We're going on water hours in the summertime. We're in our, we're in for a bunch of cave-ins.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. I'm Jim Evans.
What was the name again? The name?
Jim Evans. I want to speak on the recent Blueberry Fest, and what an underwhelming event that really was, and I may be speaking for several hundred residents here. You may not be aware of it, but only three days since the Blueberry Fest, on social media, there's well more than 100 very negative comments about the Blueberry Fest, and some of the comments were that there were outrageous fees after paying a $6 admission fee, that they only had one blueberry vendor, they had an additional charge for a petting zoo, and people would come to there and then turn away because they didn't want to pay this $6 fee. And there were only four comments that I could find that were positive in this whole thread on Nextdoor, and I looked into it a little bit, and there are fests that are free and very successful all over the state of Florida. Here's a few of them. The Daytona or Miami Art Fest, totally free. Mount Dora Blueberry Fest, totally free. Indian River Seafood Fest, totally free. Tampa Caribbean Fest, totally free. Orlando Carnival, totally free. Mayfair by the Lake, totally free. Orange Blossom Jamboree, free. Sarasota Seafood Fest, free. Seabreeze Jazz Fest, free. Crawfish Fest, fee. Ocala Blueberry Equestrian Fest, free. I could go on with many, many more, but I think what we've done here is we've taken a very lazy route in letting whatever promoter that is that put this and the Strawberry Fest on and did such a deplorable job of staffing it, bringing vendors in, and we're shooting ourselves in the foot by having these ridiculous admission charges that make the venue never grow, and we've got a great opportunity with all those great signs on I-95 for the Blueberry Fest, for the Strawberry Fest, to bring people with their outside dollars into Palm Coast and be an advertisement and an accompanying revenue generator to our businesses, and we're not taking advantage of it. I'd like to see our city councilor, whoever's in charge of this, in the future, get ahold of some of these other promoters, do these free fests and these successful fests like Mount Dora Blueberry Fest, and let's do it in Palm Coast. Let's put our best foot forward. That's all.
Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please.
Steep Car, Palm Coast. Florida Park Drive has an extremely enormous amount of traffic on it, and according to FDOT, it's almost equal to 1/10th the population of Palm Coast. That's a lot of cars, 8,500 cars per day. That's 3 million cars per year. 60 feet from children's bedrooms, 80 feet from children playing basketball in Holland Park, breathing exhaust fumes, breathing tire and brake dust. Okay, so that's a lot of harm being done to children. The United States Constitution in 1972 passed a Noise Control Act to promote an environment for all Americans free from noise that jeopardize health and welfare. Well, I can tell you, the traffic noise at night is bad, and you don't need to have to find me a doctor that says a good night's sleep is not essential for health, because I know it is, but there's nothing happening over there. Okay? The city also has an ordinance that's called Chapter 24, Environment, okay? Regulate and abate activities which are causing or may cause pollution of air. Do you think 8,500 cars per day on one single residential street creates pollution of air? Yes, it does. And what else does it say? May unreasonable interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property. Quality of life, it's not there. It's been removed from us by the amount of traffic coming on that street. Traffic is being exchanged between Palm Coast Parkway and Palm Harbor Truckway. Just quirk's crossing constantly. Also, the city has a comprehensive plan that says, ensure that proposed land use in development do not adversely impact existing residential areas. Where's all that traffic coming from? Developments. Hmm, isn't that something? So I'd like to ask a question. If residents are going to be fined and have penalties for disobeying policies and ordinances, what do we have to present to the city for the city to be fined and penalties punished against the cities for violating these ordinances? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
Jim Moore, Palm Coast. I have a couple issues, and I see code enforcement going up and down the road six and eight times a day, but there's a house on Palm Coast, 36 Rick and Barker. There's no electric, there is electric, I stand back. There's a, there's no weather head, the electric's laying on the ground, and there is somebody living in the house. Now, that's a violation to me because you can't lay a 220 line of electric on the ground, and if it's no riser and no meter, how can somebody be living in the house? But code enforcement goes on that road probably 10 times a day, and they don't stop and think about it or look at it, they drive with blinders on, but the other thing I have is the elevation of some of these developments, like Pine Lake. They took a swamp area and built it up about five feet higher than right across the road. Where's the water going to go that runs off of there? It's got to go downhill, so I guess the lowest property's going to get nailed with it. Same way with on Whiteview. They're taking swamp areas and filling them up and building on them. That water's got to go somewhere before it laid there. Oh, and I'm not the one that approved those building lots. Somebody else did. And Rim Fair, the sidewalks. My grandson's learning to ride a bicycle, and as you well know, there's not a sidewalk in any residential place. He lives on Riviera, one of those drives. He goes out to Rim Fair to ride his bicycle. What's he get? Slimy, slushy water hole. Even now, today, it's still soaking wet, and you can't go out there at night because there's, that's a sidewalk, it goes to a school, but we don't need any lights on it. And I may be reiterating something, but the water issue, there is a code, and the city has to be able to supply so many gallons of water to every home that's being purchased and built. So if the council feels, or the mayor, I'm sorry, I'm talking to the mayor now, if the mayor feels that the city can supply that water, that's fine. If not, that's your out to not approve these developments, because I don't think the city has it because they were just crying the other day to cut back and reserve your water. Well, it's not even summer yet, so that's all I...
Very good. Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
Hi, how are we doing? This has come up many times on social network...
Did I get your name?
I'm sorry. My name is Ron Polley. I live at One Edge Lane. This has come up a bunch of times on social media, and it's been a bug for me for two years now. You could solve so much problem. Is there a problem with putting more towers up for cellular in the town? Is there a reason why there's not enough bandwidth?
This is your time for comments, so make your comments so that...
My comment is that...
So that we can follow up.
All right. There's two parts of a cellular service. There's the data service and the voice service. The voice service carries texting and voice, and that works everywhere in the town, no problem. The data side of the situation is horrible. If you go down 100, if you're at the intersection of 95 and 100, major intersection, there is zero data network there whatsoever. You cannot do an email. I just did a speed test here in your parking lot. You've got great service, you've got about 50 megabytes here in the parking lot. At the golf course I was just at, it was two, two megabytes, right? And you get paid for putting these towers up. So I just asked the owner of the golf course, he got the perfect spot to put a tower up. Has anyone ever come to you and said, you know, can I put a tower here? You get paid 1,500 bucks a month for giving them property. So I'm just wondering, is there any holdback? I've gone, I've changed from AT&amp;T to Sprint to T-Mobile in the past two years. They all are horrible, and all I'm getting is there's no towers, and I'm wondering, is there a reason that the town is not allowing the towers? Because people want to put them up, that's for sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your comment. Well, fill out your comment card, and we'll follow up with that kind of detailed information with you.
Right, because I'd love to get in touch with the carriers and tell them where to go put their towers up.
Is there another speaker in the audience for public comment at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I'm Al Cryer from the Committee on Safety on Simron. I just wanted to cover two quickies today. One is, I promised you a couple weeks ago that we'd wrap up the entire petition program. I gave Virginia Smith the last of the residents to sign affirmatively for a sidewalk walkway on Simron 71. As all of you know, there's 800 residents that have to go to Simron. So when we put everything together, we came up with 541 signatures affirmative on the petition. Now, the sanctuary still does not, they have a, you cannot sign vultures in the sanctuary, and they sent a very nice letter to the city stating that they are 100% in favor, and that represents another 150 houses. So when you put all that together, it comes up to 690... six hundred and ninety-one houses out of the eight hundred houses that want something done on Simran. So that's basically where I'm going to leave it. I gave the file and everything to Virginia to become part of the permanent file. And I'd like to mention in closing, I got to hold myself to two minutes today, right? So anyway, in closing, this just didn't happen, these petitions. I want you to understand, that's one signature per resident that has to do Simran. These were house-to-house calls made by a group of volunteers that are just fabulous. There's thirty-seven of them. We call them blockers. And I'll be giving Virginia a list of also in two weeks. Where on every street, there seems to be somebody that knows everybody on that street. That's our blocker. That's the one that goes out with the petitions. If we want them to know something, the people on the street, like the latest, recent traffic count, we give that to them, and it spreads around. And we've tried to do this with a civic manager, and these people have just been fabulous. They've come out and helped. And on the same note, the city has been fabulous. The council has been great. I just couldn't ask for any more. And I wanted to thank everybody. And we'll just keep it going. We're moving in the right direction. The next two weeks, I want to go a little bit short of time today, but Dan Bryant will be here next week and give a little more detail on certain things. And then the final week, I'm going to take it and wrap it up with our presenters and our blockers. And I'll give Virginia a list on those. And I also might have a special guest at that one. I don't know if I can arrange it or not. But again, thank you, everybody.
Very good. Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker at this time? Yes, sir.
Hello, Jeff Namair. A lot of citizens here are really upset about you particular people voting yourself a hundred and sixty percent breaks. They find it disgusting. So the good news is, is that me and my friends have all unanimously voted you all out. And my friends voted me as mayor, and I in turn voted them as city councilman. And the first order of business is that we're going to vote ourselves brand-new Corvettes, because we want American-made vehicles, and we don't want to ride around in a little Toyota SUV or some gay-looking Tesla. So, and then the second order of business is, I'm going to vote myself a mansion, a mayor's mansion, fully staffed with hot and cold running servants. And then we need to start talking about some of the real problems here, other than you guys. One of the biggest problems here in Palm Coast is, his name is Bob Updike, and he likes to take Democrats and vote them in as Republicans. That way, he gets half of the Democrat votes and half of the Republican votes. And most of you up there are there because of this little process. So he's a big problem that we need to get rid of. He's the head of the REC, by the way. And then you have Gail Wadsworth, who's the head of the Republican Club, and Bob Updike's wife, who's the treasurer of that club. So we really need to take care of this problem. And then there was a great club called Flagler for Trump that used to actually believe in, you know, supporting President Trump. But now that one of our county commissioners or councilmen, Ed Danko, is, you know, vice president of that club, which I warned them against this a long time ago.
Sir, I referenced earlier, if we're going to become irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous, I'm going to-
I wasn't being irrelevant or-
... as your time, so please continue. Please keep that in mind. Go ahead.
Which one was I being?
Please continue.
Okay, anyhow, I'd just like to, you know, mention, you know, we have problems here in the Republican Club, and they need to be cleaned up. We need to start by getting rid of Bob Updike, his wife, Gail Wadsworth, and the president, or president and vice president of the Trump Club, because they're doing an awful job. And that's how you people got here in office to do the awful job that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address city council at this time? Excuse me, sir. Seeing none, I will close public comment at this time, and I will come to the dais. Are there any members of the city council that would like to address any comment this evening? Vice mayor first.
I would just like to ask, excuse me, Mr. Wenfrier, Pat from the R section regarding the bikes, and Jim Morton, and John also from the R section, if you would be so kind and wait till the end and see me, maybe I could do something to help. I don't know if I can, but see me and I'll schedule something with you. Because even though we are all elected at large, you are in my sector. So therefore, if you want to stay until the end, I'll gladly speak to you and me regarding my sector problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Absolutely. I would just like to address the cell phone tower question. For a little backstory, when I was first elected in 2016, our council back then, one of the first priorities was to eliminate the ordinances that had height restrictions of a hundred and fifty feet and also dictated that they had to look like trees. Remember the ornament cell phone towers? So we eliminated those rules. And we had a master cell phone plan that was presented to us by Diamond Communications. And they are now managing our relationships with the telecommunication providers. That contract will be up soon, I believe at the end of this year. And I'm not going to, you know, dive too far into that, but it's my disposition that we would be able to handle our own relationships with the telecommunication companies and the carriers. And that's the direction that I hope this moves in. But just for clarity, they are the ones who are in communication with ISPs and telecommunication companies right now. But that could change potentially here in the near future.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman, any comments?
No comment. Well, one, the gentleman who mentioned the two-twenty electrical line across, I want to make sure, I'm sure our city manager is going to be on top of that.
Thank you, councilman. Safety issue. Appreciate that very much.
Yep.
Councilman, comment?
Just in regards to the R section and the dirt bikes and things that are going on over there, I do understand and hear your concerns with that, and am concerned about the safety of our youth as well. So thank you for bringing that up today.
Thank you. And city manager, you'll have the information to follow up. Are there any points that you feel you want to address now, or we'll follow up with the normal procedure?
We'll follow up with the normal procedure because there was numerous items for each resident in some cases.
Numerous items and multiple staff departments involved in order to make sure that you give a both transparent, complete, and correct answer, right? Very good. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the minutes. We have minutes this evening to approve for the April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two business meeting, and the April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two special budget workshop. I would call for a motion to approve.
Motion.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And a second. Clerk has that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Clerk has it. Thank you. We'll move to the next section of the agenda, which will be our proclamations and presentations, which are interesting, exciting tonight. So Vice mayor, if you would lead us off, please.
Two of my favorite people. Hello. This is a proclamation issued by the City of Palm Coast. Proclamation. Whereas near fifty years ago, the White House proclaimed to the nation that as pace of change accelerates around us, Americans more than ever need a lively awareness of their roots and origins in order to base the sense of identity in present direction and in future. Whereas the month of May has since been designated across America's National Preservation Month, celebrating the nation's heritage through historical relics and places and layers. Historic individuals, objects, and places are well worth preserving because safeguarding their rich and lively histories perpetuates the traditions that every community cherishes. Whereas, our esteemed Palm Coast Historical Society-
There you come, huh?
-was formed twenty-one years ago to document, collect, preserve, and disseminate decades of material relating to the history of the City of Palm Coast and its residents. And whereas, their resources, archives, exhibits, and memories supplies an enduring connection from our inventive past to our bright future. And whereas, the Palm Coast Historical Society continues to raise our awareness of the significance of preserving past narratives as verification for residents to treasure for our generations. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Palm Coast, do hereby proclaim May twenty-twenty-two as National Preservation Month, and encourage residents to be energized by the city history that stitches together the histories, excuse me, the stories of all who tied our community together with threads of hope and promises. Signed, the third day of May, by the mayor of Palm Coast and the city, where also Palm Coast. Would you like to say a few words? Come on, just make up your mind.
We're right here. Thank you very much, council. We really appreciate this. We appreciate the recognition that you're giving us and the support that you're giving us. We believe in the preservation of our city for our future generations. Kathy will say a few words in a moment. I would like to invite you personally and everyone in the audience to the fourteenth, May fourteenth unveiling of our city mural. Early history of our city mural dedicated to the memory of our past mayor and past president of the Palm Coast Historical Society, John Metz.
Please, please let us know the location so everyone in the room knows where to come.
That's excellent.
I want to thank you personally, because maybe some people don't know, every meeting, every meeting, John Metz.
Oh, very nice.
He's one of my heroes.
Very nice.
Only one problem, unfortunately, I will not be in town. I spoke to you weeks ago. I will not be in town. That breaks my heart. But you want to know something? I'm not going to be there. If I was there, I only would say, look at these pictures, your memories are with me. He'll always be with me. He's one of my heroes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
He means a lot to this city. It is, it's on Saturday, May fourteenth, in Holland Park at eleven o'clock in the morning.
Thank you very much. We can get your proclamation, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Please, go ahead. The stage is yours. Oh. Our next proclamation will be delivered by Councilman Clufus.
And it's regarding National Travel and Tourism Week. Whereas, the future of travel will be a consistent driver of Palm Coast economy and workforce. And whereas, a robust travel industry provides significant economic benefits for the nation, generating more than two-point-six trillion dollars in economic output prior to the pandemic, with one-point-two trillion spent directly by travelers in the U.S. And whereas, travel has been the foundation of a healthy workforce, serving as one of the largest private sectors employers in the U.S., supporting seventeen million jobs prior to the pandemic. And whereas, spending by travelers has aided state and local governments alike, generating ninety billion dollars in state and local tax revenue prior to the pandemic to support essential services and programs. And whereas, the future of travel will prioritize diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, powering a future that values all cultures, embraces new perspectives, and reflects the faces and ideas of the full American society. And whereas, the travel and tourism industry is a significant economic driver in Florida, where domestic and international travelers spent a hundred and twelve-point-six billion dollars while visiting. And whereas, travel spending in the state of Florida directly supports close to one million jobs, making the travel industry the state's third-largest workforce, representing twelve-point-seven percent of our state's total private sector employment. And whereas, travel and tourism significantly affects the economy of Flagler County, supporting nearly five thousand jobs, generating over four million dollars in economic impact from visitors' spending, and bringing in over three-point-six million dollars in bed tax revenue, a fifty-two percent increase in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. And whereas, travel is a pillar of economic growth, creating jobs at a faster rate than other sectors. And whereas, the future of travel will continue to foster a faster recovery, create a more sustainable, seamless, and secure traveler experience, and rebuild Palm Coast workforce, driving us towards a more prosperous future. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Palm Coast Council to declare May first through May seventh, twenty-twenty-two, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Palm Coast, and urge the citizens of Palm Coast to join me in recognizing the critical role and significant contributions that tourism brings to Palm Coast. Signed this third day of May twenty-twenty-second, David Alvin, Mayor, Palm Coast.
Thank you, mayor and councilman. Amy Lukasik, Tourism Development Director. Thank you for recognizing the tourism industry this week. And a special shout out to Councilman Clufus. He has served on our tourism board for a couple years, and he's been very instrumental in representing Palm Coast, so we thank him for his support. But really, this week, our focus and our appreciation, our attention, has all been directed toward the frontline workers. All those numbers are great, but really, without the employees who show up in each and every day, we wouldn't be successful. So the service industry, just like a lot of industries, they've had a difficult time with finding staff. Everyone is hiring. So this week, what we've done is, we have purchased like two thousand little goodies to hand out to the workers, their little eco-friendly lunch boxes and sandwich bags with a small note just thanking them for showing up each and every day. So what we've liked to do is to challenge the public this week to take the time to really, you know, when you're in the restaurants, look them in the eye and thank them. Thank you for showing up today. Thank you for your great service. If you can, tip a little bit extra, write a small note on the bill. They really just want to be seen and appreciated. So one of the other initiatives that we've done this week is to go out and highlight all the different types of service industries, the faces that we have here in Flagler County, from Palm Coast, Benel, Flagler Beach. So we made a video highlighting those workers, and we'll be making them stars this week on our social media channels. So with that, I'd like to share the video with you. Thank you. I love making people happy and bringing memories. I think that is the best part of my job. Everybody that comes is smiling and enjoying themselves and creating memories for a lifetime.
I love getting to meet new people from all over the country, all over the world. I, you know, mostly, we leave them to themselves, let them sit here and enjoy the peace and quiet of the inn. But at breakfast, we often get to chat with them, or we host Saturday happy hours. And so we love getting to, you know, getting to know them and getting to hear their stories, where they're from, why they're here in Flagler. And I also love the guests getting to know each other, seeing them sitting out in our common areas and, you know, becoming friends with each other.
I get to work in a beautiful place, and every day is a new adventure. In a given week, I could be on the beach, marking a sea turtle nest. I could be leading a program, interpreting to our visitors the natural and cultural resources of the state park. I could be providing orientation for new volunteers.
I enjoy my customers, too. You know, I enjoy being, being out here, out front. I were originally open up. I opened up as to be a cook, because I love to cook, but I actually enjoy being with the customers.
Oh, I love working with the public. I love talking to them on the phone when they call to order tickets. I love discussing the various shows we have here. And also, be more informative of what we do here at Flagler Auditorium. And so when they come in, lots of them come in right to the box office to purchase the tickets, and they will bring them inside, and we'll show them the auditorium. So I love interacting with the public.
Getting to interact with the locals here in Flagler Beach and dress them for their special events and things like that.
Meeting people. I mean, we're in the hospitality industry, and we have a lot of residents that we serve and non-residents that we serve. Meeting people, and honestly, it's a great job to have because we help other people recreate. What a better job to have than to help people have fun.
I've met so many people from so many different walks of life, and we get people from all over the world.
from all over the world sometimes. And just to be able to hear their stories and see what they've done with their lives and then share my story and sometimes you just make these connections that last longer than you'd ever think.
Cuz has pretty much opened up the doors for us and opened up the doors for our restaurant, opened up the doors for our family. We are family-owned and operated, so it's myself, my husband, and we have 10 children. Nine of them are here in, in Florida in our area and seven of them are employed here. So it kind of opened up the doors to, you know, our family and give us the opportunity to kind of spread the word in the community and having people come and patronize us.
Oh, tourism impacts me every day. Everybody that visits Flagler Beach and they stroll, you know, the streets, they come and, and spend money and that's what, you know, helps us small business owners put back into the community.
Being able to be in this beautiful setting where people want to come to, so whether it's the locals or people from all over the world, they love to come here to experience the real Florida, participate in outdoor activities that we have to offer from going to the beach, kayaking, launching a boat, fishing, walking the nature trail, or camping.
The art organizations and the culture and the beaches and the restaurants and there's so many of them and there's so many more that are going up every day.
So many things about Flagler County are amazing, but I'll tell you, the county has been so accommodating working with tourism and the horses and just making this a possibility to be able to offer this to other people. It's just such an incredible experience and Flagler County has just, they, there's so many different things to see in the county and to just be part of that is, I'm just very blessed.
It's so many different things to different people. I love that it's very eclectic, especially here on Flagler Beach. You know, it's got a great little art scene, it's got a cool surf culture, good restaurants, great people. I, I love that you just sort of, you get to be you in Flagler. Also, it's really nice that it's one of the few places where you can relax on a warm sandy beach and have it almost to yourself.
The beach is beautiful. We have the best selection of like local restaurants that, you know, not franchises, that are like locally owned, awesome donut shops. We just have that great small-town feel here in Flagler Beach.
There isn't one number one thing, it's everything. It's the places that you have to visit, it's the experiences that you have, and it's the great people that you meet. I mean, it, it all comes together and it's like a perfect spot to be, to have fun and enjoy time with your family and friends.
Bakes again, and this is part of our staff, so Deborah Naughton and Christina Hutzel. Thank you.
I have, yeah. Can you bring them up? I have two proclamations and as people are coming up, let me just say this, you should sense a theme running through these proclamations and the rest of the evening. These are the people that through their day in and day out work lives add to all of our qualities of life. We would not enjoy the beautiful, the beauties of the city of Palm Coast and Flagler County except for all of their hard work and efforts. So the suggestion was made before, take a minute, when you see these people, say thank you. You know, that's where all of this starts and everyone here has talked one time or another about how important the quality of life is. Sometimes it's difficult to define, well, you're looking at it. You looked at it with the group before and the group before and the group before. This is the foundation, this is the spirit of what our quality life can be. So I have everybody here. So in keeping with the theme, this proclamation is Public Service Recognition Week. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keep our nation working. And whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oaths. And whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants include teachers, doctors, nurses, train conductors, astronauts, safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, social workers, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide with dignity and integrity the diverse services of their government demanded by the American people. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of, city council of the city of Palm Coast does hereby recognize May the first, 2022 through May the seventh, 2022, as Public Service Appreciation Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. So with that, this proclamation is signed by the mayor on this day. So thank you all from the bottom of our hearts for what you do every single day. Is there a spokesman in the group? It's always going to be you, so step right up.
Clearly I was chosen as tribute and I am the astronaut, by the way, in the, in the thing. So no, just on behalf of the BAM, the wellness team, and all city employees, thank you for this because we have over 500 employees here at the city and day in and day out, they, they come in, they make your city beautiful and they make it a great place to live. So just thank them when you see them out there because they're working hard. Thank you.
And Mayor, we do have a brief message from our city manager.
Here at the city of Palm Coast, we're fortunate to have dedicated, hard-working, public service professionals who strive to meet and exceed the expectations of our citizens and visitors on a daily basis. As a city manager of the city of Palm Coast, I feel Public Service Recognition Week is an important time to recognize all of the efforts put forth by our employees year-round. Your incredible city staff works hard to keep us safe, maintain our roads, promote smart managed growth, keep our water safe and clean, protect our environment, care for our parks, and countless other things that we tend to take for granted. Please join me in dedicating this week to showing all of our public service professionals just how much we appreciate them. And let's carry the spirit of this week with us for the rest of the year. On behalf of the residents of Palm Coast, I want to say thank you to our incredible staff and the many public servants across the country who make our lives better every single day. Thank you for putting others first.
In keeping with the theme, for all of the service that makes our life possible, this proclamation is for Professional Municipal Clerks Week. I knew you wouldn't get away with it. Stand right in the middle, please, thank you. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens and the local government bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of the neutrality and impartiality rendering equal service to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration, the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor of the city and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, May 1st through May 7th, 2022, as recognized, will be recognized as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, signed by the mayor of Palm Coast. So with that...
Congratulations, very much. Do I have to say something?
Mayor, city council, and all of our employees and our residents, we thank you for this, for honoring our service to you. Behind me, I couldn't do what I do without them. They each represent a board for the city of Palm Coast and committee. My new deputy city clerk, Kaylee Cook, assists me not only with city council, but she's also the volunteer firefighter pension board clerk as well. So I'd like to say thank you to all of you. Keep up the great work. I greatly appreciate it.
So I have a little bit of an add-on tonight, which I personally, and I think everyone on the dais will join me, that we are exceptionally proud to present these words as well this Since this week is Municipal Clerks Week, I would be remiss not to mention a great honor recently bestowed on our own city clerk, Virginia Smith. Mrs. Smith was recently appointed to the Board of Directors of the Florida Association of City Clerks. This organization acts as an important networking tool for the city clerks and the Board of Directors act as mentors to other clerks in the region. Mrs. Smith, on behalf of the city of Palm Coast, will represent the Central East Region of the state, which includes Orange, Brevard, Lake, Seminole, Osceola, Volusia, and of course, Flagler Counties. This appointment will not only allow Mrs. Smith to support other city clerks, but it also shines a positive light on the integrity and professionalism of the city of Palm Coast. Congratulations, Mrs. Smith. I know that you will be an invaluable resource to other clerks who will learn a great deal from you.
Thank you very much.
So let's give her...
Just really quick, Florida Association of City Clerks has over 500 clerks from the 400 cities throughout the city, the state of Florida. And it's a valuable organization that I've belonged to since 2010, when I became the city clerk. And they are a wealth of networking and I greatly appreciate all the assistance from them as well and I will serve Palm Coast very proudly on that board.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
[inaudible]
This is a proclamation.
Is your daughter coming up?
It is Mother's Day this week.
Future is here. Before I say the proclamation, me and trees, perfect together, especially when I go in the shade because of my hat, you know what I mean? They're my hats too. Anyway, proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with a planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And where, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperatures, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are as renewable a resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautiful communities. Whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are the source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council for the city of Palm Coast does hereby proclaim May 7th, 2022 as Arbor Day. Be it further proclaimed that the city urges all of its citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to plant trees, which will promote the well-being of this future, this and future generations. Dated this third May of 2022, signed by the mayor, David Alfen, and Virginia Smith, the proud clerk of this city.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations. And if you have a few words? You, you want to say something?
Say something?
No? Okay, then you speak.
So I'd like to say thank you, Mayor and Council, and also the residents, for supporting our Tree City USA commitment and also supporting Arbor Day. I'm hoping all of you will come out. It is this Saturday, right here in Central Park, from nine to one. And we ask for a food donation, a non-perishable food donation. In exchange with that donation, you will get a ticket to go back to our tree tent and receive a free three-gallon tree. Of course, that's while quantities last, so just keep that in mind. We're going to have free entertainment, a petting zoo, a beautiful walk-through butterfly tent, also a native butterfly release as well. So we hope you all come out and will enjoy the festivities and I greatly appreciate all of your support and being green.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll just stay here.
I have a proclamation on Monarch Butterfly Day. Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans, young and old. And whereas over the past 20 years, there has been a 76% decline in the California overwintering population of western monarch, which is comparable to the decline seen in the eastern monarch population that overwinters in Mexico. And whereas the monarch is also extremely beneficial, pollinating many cultivated flowers and crops, and serves as an indicator species for the ecological health of large geographic areas. And whereas cities, towns, and countries have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly. And whereas in February 2022, the city of Palm Coast became a monarch city as designated by Monarch City USA, a nonprofit organization dedicated to helping...
And whereas the monarch is also extremely beneficial, pollinating many cultivated flowers and crops, and serves as an indicator species for the ecological health of large geographic areas. And whereas cities, towns, and countries have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly. And whereas in February 2022, the city of Palm Coast became a monarch city as designated by Monarch City USA, a nonprofit organization dedicated to helping the monarch butterfly recover city by city. And whereas on behalf of the citizens of Palm Coast, who have already created healthy habitat for these magnificent butterflies, it is our hope that other cities across our great nation will also help to ensure that the monarch butterfly will once again flourish across the continent. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Palm Coast mayor and city council recognize the 7th of May as Monarch Butterfly Day, and further encourage citizens to plant and protect native, milled weed, and nectar sources so that monarch butterflies have the resources necessary to produce successive generations and sustain their spectacular migration through Palm Coast. Signed this 3rd day of May, 2022, City of Palm Coast Mayor David Alfen.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor and city council and residents as well. So I'm pleased to be here to accept this proclamation for the first time, the city being designated as a Monarch City USA. And we achieve that by making a commitment to help in the recovery of the monarch butterfly. And we happen to be one of the 17 Florida municipalities that share in that honor. And you will see the Monarch City USA signs have gone up along with our Tree City USA as well. So we're really thrilled, and I'm just honored to be here and have all the support in these green initiatives that the city has been very gracious in promoting. So thank you.
Would you share with our residents, you have a monarch butterfly release scheduled? When is it and where is it?
Well, and we need to talk about that because
Okay.
The butterfly purveyor let me know that they're only going to have a few monarch butterflies.
So we'll do it symbolically and we'll wait for a bigger statement later on?
Yes, yes. So we will have other native butterflies, but it won't be as prominent as that we had hoped for. There was a little issue with the development of the caterpillars, so and that's mother nature, kind of have to roll with it. So but we will still have our native butterfly release, and it will be held right here on the side of the building, City Hall.
Very good.
So and that will be at 11 o'clock sharp. We try to do it right at that 11 o'clock time, so make your way back.
This coming Saturday, right?
Yes, that's correct. Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
So thank you for the support. Appreciate it.
So next on the agenda is our Citizens Academy graduates. And I would have to say that being the director of communications here at the city of Palm Coast, this is one of my most favorite things to do, is to get to meet our residents and walk them through the city, let them meet all of the directors, our city council, and get to know more about their local city government. And I would venture to say that probably everyone standing up here learned something through the academy, right? It's a lot of fun. So for the last five weeks, we've spent about three hours every Monday night together, walking through different facilities, meeting different departments, and learning all about the city of Palm Coast. So I want to thank all of you guys for your dedication to this program. I hope that you got something out of it, and I hope that you'll be advocates going forward for the city of Palm Coast and tell your neighbors about it. And anyone who's listening, if you would like to take a future Citizens Academy, we're going to have a fall session, I believe it kicks off in September, October. And you can sign up on our website. So I would encourage everybody to get to know your city government, get to know everything that people are doing. It's a lot more than you would imagine. So now we'll graduate you.
Let me just add to that briefly. These fine citizens were sitting patiently all in the front row this evening because the last exercise for their graduation was to sit through the early part of the meeting, through the thick and the thin, through public comment, so they get a real feel for what it takes to be a resident and part of a municipality. There are just two special things, if I may. Number one, why would you go to a Citizens Academy? I'll tell you two reasons. Number one, these folks now have a working knowledge. We don't claim they have a knowledge of the intricacies of what makes our government work, but they have a working knowledge, and better than that, they now know who to call and how to contact the city if they see something, if they have an issue, whatever it is. So that's a knowledge base they have. But what I like most about it is that each one of these almost graduates is now an ambassador for the city of Palm Coast. They can now go in their neighborhoods or throughout the community and talk about how the city actually does work. So they're not going to be talking about what might be misrepresented on social media, perhaps wrong information. They've heard it from the individual department heads, all sitting behind you back there. So they've got the facts and the information that they can now share with their neighbors, friends, and newcomers. So I congratulate you that. And last thing I will say, as I feel very strongly, I was reminded today that I sat in this very class exactly 10 years ago, and the proof of it, you'll see me wear proudly at all times, which is my pin when I graduated from the city of Palm Coast. So all I can say is be careful what you wish for, but congratulations to each of you, and thank you for your patience.
Good morning. Thank you.
Eileen? And Patricia?
Coming.
And Robert. Always. All right. And thank you all again very, very much. Please tell your neighbors and friends of the experience you have, so we'll get that many more people coming.
Yes, you will.
I just want everybody to know that one of the things I experienced during the Citizens Academy was the pride that the city employees have. That was one of the biggest things. If when you have your concerns, you engage somebody from the city, you're going to find somebody that's dedicated to their job, and they're going to be very proud to help you. That's all I got to say.
Next item on the agenda will be our section for resolutions, and if council would read the first resolution into the record, please.
Yes, this is item number nine on the agenda. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida approving the terms and conditions of the concession lease agreement with the Green Lion Cafe LLC, authorizing the city manager or designate to execute the agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for an implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
And staff has a presentation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening, mayor, city council, Jason Di Lorenzo for Community Development. Today, we are back with the concession lease agreement for the Palm Harbor Golf Course. Reminder that we originally brought this on February the 8th at a workshop, and then returned on February the 15th, where you provided direction, and we'll cover those items this evening and look for a motion to continue or complete the negotiation of the contract. So I'm going to start here just with a very brief history. This is the current agreement, how it reads today. The agreement is with the Green Lion Cafe LLC. It originated in 2017. We are nearing the end of the first five-year term. It's currently $600 a month. It started at $500 a month. The first six months were not included, they were at no cost. Then at each renewal year, at September 1, it increased by $25 to get us to 600 at this point in time. The city pays all the utilities, water, sewer, electric, propane, and solid waste. And the Green Lion indicated that they desire to continue the operation at the golf course. You'll remember from February the 15th, you asked us to retain a professional to provide a fair market value analysis. And at this time, I'd like to welcome Cornelia Downing Manfree, who will go over that analysis that she provided.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. How are you? And our city manager and city clerk, how are you? My background has been 42 years, I can't believe I'm actually using that number. This marks my 42nd year in commercial real estate. I did 20 years of corporate real estate in New York, and then came to Florida to be a real estate broker. Most of my transactions have been in commercial real estate and land development. When I was requested to do a CMA, as we call it, or Fair Market Value Analysis of the Green Lion being used at the Palm Coast Golf Course, I had to back into what is a public use. But before I go into what the public use is, I want to define what goes into the analysis of commercial real estate. The retail rates in Flagler County currently, retail shopping centers, range from $14 to $30 a square foot. When those facilities are leased, they're based off of a developer's purchase of land, the profitability, the building costs, mortgage, and depreciation. Each tenant typically has a secure facility, they have their own lock and key, leases to the tenant, and that space is called the demised premises, that is then operated solely by the user and is only accessible by the user. Now restrictions are on the interior uses, no shared spaces, and typically in traffic-generated shopping centers. And shopping centers are defined as grocery or strip centers. Grocery, magnets, the Publix, your Winn-Dixies, are where other tenants will gravitate because they know the volume of traffic that is going before them, that they can get the traffic to come to their facility as well. Then we look at the key factors for rent in shopping centers, medical office buildings, and the like. One is going to be the location in the community. Then we study your street traffic, which is your AADT, your average annual daily traffic count. Then you look for your centers, generators, and their visibility to the public. And most importantly, especially when I was in charge of Dunkin' Donuts, Baskin Robbins, and you needed a cup of coffee in the morning, we made sure you had a big Dunkin' Donuts sign out there. So signage is very critical for any retail use. But we are now talking about a concession agreement. And in concession agreements, typically the concessionaire is providing a service to the grantor. In concessions in private areas, we typically will look at something like the International Speedway. International Speedway is handled by one major corporation that handles all the concession of the different levels of the Speedway. Malls, your Volusia Mall, your Millennium Mall. Ah, we do get to shared space. However, the mall developers charge the individual tenants for the space that they occupy. The mall operators oversee the shared space, the cleaning, the electricity, the air conditioning. Then there are other areas where you might find concession, particularly medical office buildings. Our medical office building here in Palm Coast has a cafe that services the patients that I believe we have just hundreds and hundreds of people that go to that medical office building. The cafe is not charged to rent at all. Then we look at the public side of concession. Most of our concession areas will be in our parks or golf courses, the use of public land for food trucks, i.e., you know, our Tuesday truck night, and other public lands, campgrounds, et cetera. In order to analyze just this specific area, because we're in the location of Flagler County, city of Palm Coast, I wanted to analyze what we have as public areas that have food and beverage, basically, that are being served. So we currently have Captain's Barbecue, Hijackers, Bull Creek, and the Green Lion. In the table that I've provided for you, I've broken down the rental per year, the term that was given to each of, some have lease agreements, some have concession agreements, two different types of agreements. And some buildings, like Bull Creek, the entire building is leased to the one entity, and so they already have meters for water and electric that exist. And in that negotiation, they are paying those utility charges. The interior maintenance of the building is by the tenant. So any additional changes that they make, new flooring, changes of walls, concession, any of those public areas that are serving are by them, and also their kitchen equipment, et cetera. And that particular property includes the outside deck space. They have exclusive use to the property. At the end of their business day, they lock the door and go home. Also, they have exclusive parking. The additional point about the Bull Creek agreement is that rather than the county having employees there taking the fees for the parking or the campsites, that is on the tenant, and the tenant and the county share in those revenues. That way, the county is saving dollars by not having to have specific employees there taking care of it, because you already have the tenant there in their agreement with the building. Captain's Barbecue, at present, they are currently $519 a square foot. That agreement provided them a one-five-year option or a 110, depending upon how much work was being done. There again, a freestanding building that is occupied solely by the tenant. So the tenant has the agreement to pay the utilities, they take care of the interior maintenance, the exterior maintenance, because it is also a shared park area and marine area, that is covered by the county. The Captain's Barbecue additionally has the exclusive use of the interior premises and the parking area that's closest to the restaurant. Again, the equipment that's installed in the restaurant, any upgrades, et cetera, are by the tenant at the tenant's cost. The last column, and I'll talk about that at the end, which is the traffic counts. The Hijackers Restaurant recently just had a renegotiated lease agreement. There are step-ups for their capital improvements. So this coming June 1st, they have agreed to $714 a square foot with all of the, a capital improvement schedule that was established between the two parties. And then the Green Lion we have today, currently the, I'm sorry, excuse me a moment, I think we're missing part of the spreadsheet.
They have the full spreadsheet.
Okay. The Green Lion presently, the Green Lion presently is at 360, and then it steps up per the schedule that you were given. And then the proposed, starting at $725 a foot, going up annually by increments, which gives you an average of the five years at $1079 a square foot. There, the tenant is paying for the interior maintenance, the exterior is by the city. It does not have exclusive use to the premises, nor does have exclusive use of the parking. And the equipment that has been installed since the inception is by tenant. One of the other factors that we consider in the commercial real estate arena are the signage and how many people are going by entering into my shopping center or going past me on a highway or a parkway. So the Bull Creek campground has two building signs, one at the entrance and one on the waterway, which is a very good attraction, but the only average on that main road, 400 cars per day. only average on that main road, 400 cars per day. The Captain's Barbecue has a building sign and an entrance sign, and the last count for A1A at that location is 8,600 cars per day. Then, the Hijackers Restaurant, you have two building signs and one entranceway. And I want to point out, the entranceway at, and I'm specifying the entranceway signage is critical because those are the ones that your drivers are seeing the sign. So your Captain's Barbecue, you have 8,600 cars a day seeing it. Then, down on Route 100, the Hijackers has 20,100 cars passing by with recognition of where they are. The Green Lion has two building signs. There are, according to the information that I've been provided, 140 minimum, maybe 200 on very busy golf days, 140 to 200 people, not cars, people, that go to the premises. There are no annual average daily counts for the road upon which the Green Lion rests. In conclusion, I would like to recommend that the Green Lion, it's my recommendation, that the Green Lion rent for shared space, and let me go into shared space, as I started in the beginning, Demise Premises with a locked door at the end of business, the Green Lion does not lock the doors. The City of Palm Coast has control of the building, and so the premises, the restrooms, access to the golf sign-in area, and also the outside deck are all shared space. That's kind of unusual. So in order to be able to come to a fair and balanced analysis, I believe $9 to $10 a square foot, which was inclusive of the current utilities that they are, I mean, the city paying the current utilities. And I understand there's discussion about breakup of utilities, and those are all negotiated items that can be dealt with between the parties. Does anybody have any questions?
Can we ask questions?
Yes, please.
Okay. Good afternoon, Ms. Manfree. What did exactly the staff ask you to do?
Determine a fair market value for rent for the Green Lion.
They asked you to do a fair market analysis?
Yes.
Because the way you described it, I'm even surprised that the Green Lion wants to be there, to be honest with you. Unfortunately, there was only one person doing this. You led to the lack of privacy by having people going by. You didn't say those words, but I'm assuming that's what it is. I read, actually, I've read for the last two weeks, I've read your executive summary. Let me put it clear. I don't know Mr. Marlowe from nowhere. Mr. Marlowe sent me an email to speak to me. With all due respect, okay, I spoke with staff and to council through staff, and they felt that wasn't proper for me to do. If anybody else did it, fine. I just don't know the gentleman, and I sure didn't go take a picture with him and put it on my Facebook. That I didn't do, just for the records. You were talking about 2,600, I mean, excuse me, 2,000 square feet that we have there that's being used. The city is actually giving up 620 square feet for the usage of average two hours, four hours a week for a table from the groups that go down and play. The other thing you mentioned here, about $100,000, I have no idea how you found out about those $100,000, because I requested an itemized list of what was there, and I'm yet to get one. By the way, this list should already be done. Should be over here just for us to approve instead of discussing it. Another thing that the mayor mentioned, and at the time, it looked okay, was, and here I have to defend the Lisi, which is termination by convenience. I think it should be in a contract, termination by convenience, because it's good for both of us. It's good for the city, and it's good for the Lisi. We'll protect them. Let's say that in a year, year and a half from now, you never know, with wars all over, this economy goes really bad. Economy goes really bad. And the Lisi needs to get out because he cannot afford to be in a business that's losing money. So if we leave termination by convenience, that would only help. The city, I guarantee the city won't do that unless there's a big problem. But it will give the Lisi the opportunity to do so. And then, if we look at, on the, excuse me, give me just for a second, please. Line three and four of your fourth paragraph on your executive summary, where you says $9 to $10 inclusive of fire, excuse me, of utility charges. Once again, let me revert to your analysis. Captain's Barbecue, the county gets $10,800 a month. Hijackers, as of next month, the county will get $36,000 a month.
I'm sorry, sir. These are annual numbers?
Excuse me?
These are annual numbers?
I'm reading from your report.
It's for you?
I'm reading from your report, which was given to me about two weeks ago. I could show it to you just to confirm that's your report. Would you like to take a look at it?
I have the report in front of me.
Steph?
Yes?
Could you jump in for a minute and just define the number so we don't get hung up on the definition of the number?
Yes.
I'm reading from your report, sir.
Just the column heading. I just want to make sure that we're all clear on the dais, that's all.
Yeah, it's annual.
So those numbers would be divided by 12?
Correct.
For a monthly number?
Did I say month? I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure there's no confusion.
Okay. And then, basically, let me go back to it. Captain's Quarter gets $10,800 a year. Hijackers gets $36,000 a year. And with this contract, your proposal, City of Palm Coast will be paying, will be paying, not receiving, will be paying $22,000 a year. Is that correct?
Plus or minus?
Plus or minus, but it's just there.
At what point in time?
In other words?
At what point in time are you considering?
The first year.
So if that's...
But this is, I'm comparing it to the other thing. So at this, I'm just, allow me to make my point, and then if you have to tell us anything else, please do, because that's what you're here for. Okay. Honestly, if we are going to be paying someone to be on our premises, I don't know. Is that a good deal for us? Is that a good deal for the City of Palm Coast? How am I going to, okay, how am I going to tell people out there that, listen, we signed, we agreed on a deal that actually we're going to be paying $22,000 a year?
Why are you paying them?
So, Vice President, question for the expert. The remainder of your points, you might want to reserve for staff in terms of the concept of it. So the expert hired can speak to those numbers, but if you would, we'll have Mr. DiLorenzo take over with your questions about the vision, the...
Be advised that this was given to me by Mr. DiLorenzo.
Yes, we obviously see the same thing.
Okay. So, and I don't think that anything changed over here, and, okay, but then again, if we have other questions...
So let me just make a point here. So I do understand that you're focusing on one year. The agreement itself goes on for many years, so you just want to underline the fact that this is a point in time. And I think the staff will take you through the timeline when they're given the opportunity to...
I could tell you throughout all years, we're still going to be losing money every year with these numbers.
So is that a question for staff?
No, no, I'm telling you because if you're telling me that there's five years...
I can't answer the question. Could you ask the question to staff so they could answer specifically?
At the proper time, I will.
Okay.
That's it, Ms. Manfree, for me. Thank you.
Councilman, question for...
No, thank you very much for looking into, I was actually a student in this operation here because I was not under, I didn't understand that Bull Creek was a county-run facility. And after reading your report, there was, obviously, it's hard for me to mentally compare Hijackers to the Green Lion as far as dollar values, because Hijackers is a legitimate restaurant. And a lot of these things, the premises that they have exclusive use to just don't necessarily fit the Green Lion. But thank you for your fair market value analysis. I understand it's probably a difficult proposition to be asked to try to come up with these figures because we don't have any direct comparables. But I looked over the report, and I was very satisfied with your analysis.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman?
Yeah, Cornelia, I want to thank you for your work in putting this together. I really appreciate it. And we'll figure something out. But thank you so much for your efforts on this.
Councilman?
So I did have a few. The 140 to 200, that was an approximate number of rounds of golf that go through that facility in a day?
According to the gentleman that runs the golf course, those are the number of people, give or take. And surprisingly, Saturday was the lowest count. But those are the numbers of golfers that actually come in, pay for their rounds, and go off and golf. So, you know, that's kind of, I can't use cars, because you don't have any cars that go past it, except for the people accessing the golf course or the small community. So it's not a reported number. So I was using a people count.
Sure. So that is, it's unique to its location and the facility in itself. But there is a draw there of actually going there to golf, but then also having the ability to eat while you're there.
They both complement each other, correct?
Yes. The other thing is, looking at the private exclusive use of $14 to $30 per square foot, is it reasonable to say that there aren't facilities for rent under that $14 a square foot for commercial use in the city right now?
In the City of Palm Coast?
Yes.
It all depends upon what we're talking about. There's a difference between office rate, medical office buildings, retail rates, industrial and warehousing. There are all sorts of rates. I mean, right now, I'm working on an older building, an industrial building, that I'm collecting 10 minus. And then, I have, and that's considered a gross lease because the landlord is paying for the water. Okay? It all depends upon how the building is put together and how many people, how many tenants have individual meters. Meters are expensive. So if electricity is a concern, you have an electrical engineer come in and assess what are the usages between the two. Ditto for the water. However, the water, you have to remember, you've got that number of golfers coming in, and everybody goes, gets probably typically two cups of water per player. So that water concession and that ice machine outside are more golf usage, city, okay, let's call it city. So the water usage by Green Lion would really be washing, putting the plates through a dishwasher. There's not a lot of water usage. So you simply analyze it and then come to an agreement of, you know, who's going to pay for what. And that's, you know, that's what I've discussed with staff as well.
Here's your question?
I do have a question for the city, but I'll hold that.
Okay. Let me just make one comment. What the expert was asked to do was to accumulate data and facts, put it into a presentation. And she has described it as a CMA, a comparative market analysis, or a broker's price opinion. So the last word is a key for city council members. This is an opinion based on the data and the information that was collected. An opinion based on, as some city council members have said, to comparables that may or not be easy to understand because we have a limited number of comparables available. But at the end of the day, just like any other appraisal, this is an opinion as of the moment. So I just want to make sure that that's clear to everyone.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Jason, would you like to summarize for a minute, and I'm sure you have questions?
We have a few more slides to go through, if you don't mind. So, using the fair market analysis that was provided by Mrs. Manfree, we updated the agreement that you previously saw back in February. And the red line items here are the updates, and the blacks are what was already in that new agreement. And I'll just focus on the red ones, okay? So a starting lease rate of $10 per square foot, that would be a starting monthly price of $1,665. An increase of 3% applied annually. Electrical consumption for the leased space will be metered and charged. Now, you may remember, six, eight months ago, we introduced a company that moved to Palm Coast called Watcor. And Watcor makes a metering system, and it's especially good for using on retrofits. We invited Watcor out to the facility to see it, and they said, yes, they could provide a metering system for the facility. And it wasn't cost prohibitive to do that. We haven't scheduled installation until we get further down the road. And if you agree that that is the direction you'd like to go to, go with, we would be able to meter the kitchen portion of the building, separate from the remaining portions that the city uses. The hot water booster is the responsibility of the tenant. Now, this is a change. In the original agreement, we were taking responsible for the hot water booster. The hot water booster is used to bring the dishwashing temperature up to a sanitary condition, right, to meet health safety. But we had a very small water tank in that building. It was only 30 gallons. And we have been working with the tenant to schedule an installation of an 80-gallon tank. That will, there will still be a reliance on the hot water booster because the tank can't produce that temperature of water for an entire building because you'd scald people in the bathroom. But this will provide a larger volume of water, so there would be less dependence on the booster. Because right now, the booster is sometimes having to use, you know, room temperature water and heat it up to 160 degrees. Now, we'll have a larger tank that will help with that situation. The hot water booster has no other use in the facility except for the dishwasher. The tenant must install and maintain an under-sink grease interceptor. The building has a grease interceptor. But recently, we had to do significant plumbing work because utensils were found in the pipe. And our facilities manager believes with a relatively inexpensive under-the-sink grease interceptor, we could prevent that from happening and having backups into the kitchen, which occurred. So those are the main changes. But if you have any questions about the overall concept here in the agreement, I'd be happy to answer them here. But I do have a couple more slides, or I can come back to this afterwards.
You want to finish your slides?
I'm sorry. You're going to talk about the utilities, the cost of utilities in a minute?
Yeah, well, yes. I'll touch, I will try to answer your question at the end, okay? Okay. We presented this new agreement that encompassed the changes from the fair market analysis, and we provided it to the tenants and their attorney. And they wished to not use the new agreement, but make an amendment to the current agreement. In discussions with the city manager, it was decided that, to be as transparent as possible with you and the public, that we would provide that amendment. And the entire amendment was in your backup. But we also thought it was important to compare the new agreement, which, you know, we spent months, several months over a table negotiating line by line through the original RFP, an old agreement, and to create the new document. And so, at this time, I'll go through a comparison between where we are now, what we are proposing as staff, and the amendment as proposed by the attorney for the tenant. Okay. So, the new agreement is on the left, and the tenant's proposed amendment is on the right. The city staff recommends $10 per square foot, and the tenant... staff recommends $10 per square foot and the tenant proposes $9 per square foot. As indicated in the fair market analysis, we include a three-part increase...I'm sorry, a 3% increase annually. The tenant proposes a 0 to 3. It's not quite that easy. Basically, they're saying it should be tied to something, maybe CPI, something that fluctuates more with a cap of 3%. So it could be 0 to 3%. We propose that the tenant pays metered electric, propane, telecom, and internet. The tenant proposes to just pay propane, telecom, and internet. The current agreement...or the new agreement and the current agreement says that the restaurant will open at 7:00 a.m. The amendment proposes that they will open at 9:00 a.m. Monday through Thursday. And interesting, I don't remember who made the distinction. I think maybe it was Ms. Manfree said that our slowest day is Saturday. But that's the day that they proposed to be open earlier. So that doesn't really correspond with golf operations. Both eliminate the termination of cause...termination of convenience clause. They...the new agreement may be extended five years by mutual consent. The amendment proposes that the tenant has the right of first refusal after the first five-year period is complete. Basically, if...how it's written, if we decided that we no longer wish to have the tenant and we...after the five years, and we wanted to go out for bid, after that bid process was concluded, they would have the right to match that amount. That's what they're asking for. And the...we strengthen the termination for cause. Of course, if we're going to reduce...eliminate the termination for convenience, we wanted to make sure that the city was provided strong termination for cause in the event of something happening at the facility. And that's not addressed in the amendment. Moving on, the new agreement requires a catering menu. This is because we host events there. And we've had instances in the past where, you know, catering for a tournament or something hasn't been available. There's some other step...opportunities in there for the city to use outside catering if the tenant is not able to meet the needs of a tournament. It requires 60 days notice for the tenant for events, maintenance, events and maintenance which could affect daily operations. This is a benefit to the tenant. It provides more communication with the benefit...with the tenant to ensure that we are not adversely affecting their business with, you know, with maintenance or other items. As I mentioned earlier, we have the grease interceptor. This has the...the new agreement has the ability to have live music consistent with city code and not have special circumstances for live music. We provided a space to the tenant to host weddings and events, which they desire to do. There's several RFP cleanup items. This is not an exhaustive list. This is just the larger items related to the beverage carts, written consent of alterations, the requirement of a liquor license, and exclusive beverage contracts. All of those are no longer in use at the golf course. And it also updates...there's updates to state law for verifying and public records notification. And none of those items are addressed in the amendment. This is the final slide, Vice Mayor, and then I will try to answer your question. The staff is looking for some clarification on how you would like to move forward. Provided two options. Option one is to approve the lease agreement while confirming the price that you would like per square foot, also to confirm the annual increase percentage. And then describe the responsibility of the utilities that you would like. Okay? So that could be how it's described in the contract now or in some other method. Or if you prefer the amendment that's proposed by the tenant, you could select that option. And then we would also ask that you provide a time certain for when the negotiation should end and the contract should be signed. And we're suggesting 30 days. So...
Vice Mayor, I just...I want to ask counsel just to summarize just for a second first so that we've been through a lot of stuff. Counsel, can you just give us a summary on where we're together or apart on the big-ticket items? Can you...you've had discussion with the other counsel. Where are we with...where are we different?
Right. So you want to go back to the side, Jason? As far as the specifics goes, the first three items, which, you know, I...as far as big-ticket items, I'm going by what Jason just mentioned as the three big-ticket items. But keep in mind, the tenant may feel some of these other items are big-ticket items to them, too. But if you look at the first three items here, those are the items that the city and the tenant differ at this point. Now, as far as any...trying to come to an agreement on this, there may be the ability to on some of it through negotiation. That would need to be determined by the tenant if they were open and willing and by the city if we were to agree to it. I think that the tenants' counsel is here and will be able to speak to some of these items. But as far as the options go that Mr. Di Lorenzo had on the board, as far as option one and two, yes, those are your two options. But there's also a third option where if counsel decides that they wanted to, you know, give direction on certain items, your required items or threshold items, let's call them, you could do that. And then you could pass the authority to the city manager and the staff to further negotiate some of the less threshold items or the smaller items with the tenant and then hopefully come to an agreement that the city manager can execute and you can be on your way if you so choose.
Okay. Now, Vice Mayor, now's a good time to...
Once again, I like to be fair for the Green Lion. Personally, I don't think we should tell the Green Lion how much to charge anytime they create...that they create a body. We should not be in the business of telling them if we tell...create a menu for the whole year. Okay? I think we interfering with a man's business and I don't think we should do it. It's only my opinion. I don't think we should do it.
Vice Mayor, oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
They would create the menu and the pricing for it. It's just so there's a published menu. I wasn't very clear and I apologize. It's just so there's a published catering menu. So when events come to the golf course that they would like to hold a tournament or an event, there's a standard menu with a published cost to that menu.
I'm still not comfortable with that.
Okay.
I cannot, for the life of me, tell the gentleman, you're going to have to create a menu for the whole entire year. He may want to change from American food to Indian food, as far as I'm concerned. It's up to him if he's paying his bills. Okay? That's what it is. I'm not comfortable with that. The other thing I'm not comfortable with...
Just so we can move forward with this. So I understand your point. So do I understand that it just needs to be made...whatever's on the menu chosen by the tenant would be made available to the public so they know what's on the menu?
Yes.
Does that satisfy you?
But not really. Is that for the whole year? They create a menu for the whole year? I think I heard the...
They could change it. I mean, you could do it. You could do it every month, right?
It's fine.
Okay, good. So on a monthly basis, I think is more fair. Okay?
That would be up to them.
Okay. The other thing that I already mentioned that I'm not too comfortable with is that...and once again, is to protect both sides over here. Termination by convenience. This will allow the leasing and us, if we're not happy for whatever reason, which I don't think that's going to be the case. But if...let's say we have a bad, really bad economy, we're going to make a man stay there and lose money on a monthly basis. I think that should be an option that he has. Okay? One thing, it's...the other thing is, you really left out the most important bill. Right now, the water bill, it's $2,000 a month. And for what I've seen and for what I kind of mastered by speaking to staff and a few other things, we spent about $600 the most. This is being conservative, the most, out of those $2,000. So...and meanwhile, we're not talking about it over here. So I think that we discussed it yesterday. We discussed it in the past, the possibility of actually having two meters. I mentioned to you, I went there with someone, that are two...three modules, one occupied by us and two occupied by the leasing. And our conversation yesterday, you told me that one of our technicians told you that that would be too expensive to create two water meters. Okay? I don't know. I think that the water bill should be involved in this. It's the biggest bill. It's $2,000 a month. Okay? And you even mentioned that 150 times somebody washes their hands and other things.
Right.
Vice Mayor, just to help. So bullet point number three under option number one is for us to decide. So it's right in front of us. We just have to make a decision on what it should be.
And that's also something else I want to ask, if I may. My question to you is this. If the Green Lion, in this case, does not agree with what you're proposing, with my changes or not my changes, would you feel comfortable continuing the...further negotiations with the Green Lion? This is...the question is directly for you.
Well, counsel, just answered that question before.
No, I am asking him because he's been involved in this. And I want to see if he's...
But counsel has given us the answer.
A body is feeling comfortable with going ahead with this?
No.
But that's my question.
Of that being another option. Staff will be directed by city manager.
Yes.
City council.
But before I make that decision, I would like to see how he feels about it. And that's the reason I'm asking that. Okay, you don't have to answer. I got my answer.
Mr. Di Lorenzo, you'll take direction from the city manager on how to proceed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Sure. Clarification on the water utilities would be excellent. But my one sticking point for termination by convenience versus termination by cause, I don't think that the city council, once we make this agreement, it's my opinion that termination for convenience on our end shouldn't be an option at least for this first five-year period. And I actually am a proponent of the right of first refusal for an additional five-year period. The only thing that hangs...
I'm sorry, proponent or opponent?
I'm a proponent.
Proponent.
Proponent of allowing an extension with right of first refusal. I would also say the one thing that kind of hangs in the unknown is whether or not what's going to happen with that facility as far as actually, you know, in the future, there's going to need to be upgrades to that site and to the building. For everybody who's not familiar, it's a double-wide trailer right now. And the restrooms are an interesting thing for me, too. And I'm not sure how that played into the opinion of value. But I know the men's bathroom there has one stall and two urinals. And it's just for a restaurant, that acts at any type of capacity. It's just very small and not great. But going down to the different options that we have here, in the comparison on the second to last slide, if you could just go up one here, I'm not certain that any of these are necessarily sticking points, in my opinion. Just from my purview, I don't think that there would be too much...too many problems with negotiating between both parties for these things. But as far as the comparison on the previous page, I think the best option would be to try to come to some type of, you know, median between these options. I don't have any real sticking points. I'd like to hear from potentially the tenant on why the proposed amendments are being proposed. But yeah, what...really, there's nothing on my end that I could see being a sticking point that couldn't be negotiated between both parties. And the rate of rent seems to be fair, especially with the professionals' value of opinion. The 3% increase annually, I think potentially there may be an agreement that's viable if we eliminate the termination for convenient...elimination...the termination...eliminate the termination for convenience clause potentially would allow us to get closer to the $10 per square foot, originating at $1,665 per month. I think that might be an option. The new agreement, is there a specific reason that we would ask them to open up at 7:00 a.m.? Is that because they provide breakfast services?
Correct, yeah. The golfers arrive, depending on the time of the year, golfers arrive, you know, between 7:00 and 8:00 a.m., 7:00, 7:30 usually. You know, weather-related, obviously, and if the greens are wet and so on, when first tee time is.
Gotcha. Understood. And I'm curious, like, I don't really know the distribution of clientele for the Green Lion at the location, so I can't speak on specifics of when people show up or not to actually use their facility. I know on the weekends that they have a tremendous brunch, which doesn't coincide necessarily with the golf course usage. But I understand why they would want to open up earlier on the weekend. But yeah, those are my thoughts on the comparison and the differentiation between our new agreement and the proposed agreement. I think that there's room to work together and that we're not too far off from one another.
Could I just jump in here real quick? Just to reference one thing, I just want to clear up a potential area of confusion. So the city, in the new lease they proposed, put in an option for the first right of refusal. If there's a new facility built or something like that, that the Green Lion would get the ability to move into that facility. As far as the term extension, so at the end of the first five years, the city is stating that an additional term of five years could be by mutual consent of the parties. So the agreement continues on and can extend it for five years. The tenant's amendment gives the ability to extend for five years. If the parties cannot agree on terms of the extension, then the tenant will have a right of first refusal if we go out to bid. The issue I potentially see in that is that we could open ourselves to a potential bid protest if we're coming out and asking bidders to come in. And then at the last second, once everything gets in and we start negotiations and we negotiate, if the Green Lion can come in and say, oh, wait, we'll meet that, then that just goes away. And I think that without some...and I don't know that it can be done, but that is a concern that I have with that particular provision. And as far as waiting until after we go out to bid and then getting everybody's basically market rate in and what everybody's asking for and then saying, oh, no, we're going to give it to the Green Lion now because they've agreed to meet it. So that's the issue that I see with that first right of refusal from a legal standpoint.
And is that particular to a municipal standpoint? Because in the private business...in the private world, you know, in like commercial real estate, so that would be specific to our situation.
Right, because we are required to go through procurement and a bid procedure that we have in place. And, you know, typically, we do include things that allow us to get out of that. But we're going into it knowing that this could happen, potential issue.
Just clarification. What if we don't come to an agreement with the Green Lion?
At...right now, at this point?
The new contract.
Okay.
The new contract that we proposed.
A new contract. So right now, the Green Lion is under contract with the city and will continue to proceed unless the city terminates the contract, which they can under the current agreement. So that would be...or the agreement can continue on.
That's why, more than ever, I think that the termination by...
Convenience.
Convenience is very important.
Let's let each of the council members...
Are you talking about the termination of convenience, just for clarification purposes, for the tenant or for the city or for both?
Both, both. But I wouldn't want anything in a contract that would be just good for the city. Has to be also as good for the leasing. Has to be the same. Otherwise, it's not a fair contract.
Okay.
I'm sorry, councilman, one second. You have to help me with this. Bear with us for a minute. So, councilman, so termination for convenience by both parties, at least in my mind, negates a contract. You know, we get up and go to work every day and hope for the best. There's no contract. Correct me if I'm wrong.
So basically, you know, it allows for either party, and it depends on the term of the convenience. Either party can terminate for whatever reason and not for cause, not because someone is in default or someone has done something wrong or somebody has not met their obligations. Allowing this, you know, allowing a termination for convenience with a short period of time, for example, in either case, for the city, may be detrimental because the city wouldn't be able to get another vendor lined up in a certain period of time because we would have to go through the bid procurement procedures. And, you know, that takes a significant amount of time. We'd have to negotiate a new contract and then get somebody in to take over. and then get somebody in to take over within the period of time that you want to terminate the contract. Also, from a, you know, a tenant's standpoint, and I'm sure their attorney will touch on this, it puts them in a place where they're not assured of continuing on the operation. So, any investments that they may make or anything like that, if there's, if they, if the city can come in and say, okay, we're going to terminate this, then, you know, that will impact how they operate their business. So, you know, putting a termination for cause assures that both parties will operate the way they're supposed to and keep up with their responsibilities under the contract. And that if they don't, then this is the, you know, the item, kind of the stick to keep everybody in line.
So, Councilman Danko, but let me just ask, so termination for cause means that we have a good reason to terminate. So we have to define those reasons and then we can do that. Does that satisfy where you're going, in other words?
Not at all, not at all, Mr. Mayor. What I'm saying is this, we could have the termination for cause, but also give the opportunity.
So let's do one at a time.
Give the opportunity to the leasing. And I gave you the biggest example, nobody could guarantee that next year, we're going to have a good economy. The man is going to be stuck without a amount of money to pay every month. And he can't get out of it.
That's business risk, I mean, that's.
Yeah, but the thing is that, so if we leave that in there, we will be helping a local business. You want more of a help to the local business than this? I don't know. And that doesn't hurt anybody, leaving that over there, doesn't hurt us and doesn't hurt him. Okay? That will be, you could have it for cause or you could have it by convenience. It hurts absolutely no one. And it's fair because it's good for both sides.
I'm going to have to disagree with you because, and let me explain why, so. But yeah, based on my experience, so if you, and Counselor, correct me if I'm wrong here, and I'll get to you in a second. If you have termination for convenience, so just for example, if the business is going to work on any kind of a finance model, you're never going to be able to go to a lender and say, hey, I'm in business today, but I may not be in business tomorrow. Whether it seems good or not, you're going to take away their ability to finance, which is an integral part of every business that operates, almost every business that operates here locally. So I'm just concerned about the noose that we put around the operator's neck in terms of making them successful. And I'm pretty sure what I'm hearing from you is, we'd like to find every way to help them be successful because that's good for the city and good for the residents of the city. So, that's why I'm hesitant to agree on the termination for convenience because it will be read a certain way by every bank and/or lender and supplier. So, I've been in this business as well. So in order to supply a price to your customers, you usually will agree for some lengthy periods of time for some volume purchase. Well, if that vendor is under the impression that this deal could evaporate on any given day, they might want to charge a premium, which would mean that our residents and the users of the facility would pay a premium, which is not what we would like them to do, we'd like them to get the best deal we possibly can. So those are just my concerns and we'll get back to it, I'm sorry, I just wanted to get that out.
I completely agree with you, but if any supplier, it's going to supply someone with the food, in this case, or whatever, based on their lease, I don't know, it's just agree to disagree.
Okay, Councilman?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for your clarification, Council. I see eliminating termination for convenience of clauses agreed to by both parties already. They want the security of knowing they're going to be there for five years. Strengthening our termination for cause, we'll come up with the definition of cause, I'm sure we can reach some agreement on that. So I'm good with that part. The opening time, and this is an interesting one to me because once they lease, well, they're leasing it now, but once they sign a new agreement, it's basically their candy store. And I think they should be able to determine their hours of operation based on their business. If their business isn't doing that well at 7:00 AM, just because we may have some people playing golf, doesn't mean they need to be open at 7:00 AM. If they decide they want to open at 9:00 AM, I think that's fine. I think if they want to change their hours of operation and on Tuesdays, open at 7:00 AM, I think they have to have the flexibility of operating that business. It's their candy store at this point. Now, moving on to the first right of refusal, I think it should be maybe extended five years by mutual consent. And I agree with Council that we don't want to get into a bidding process and then somebody comes along and makes a bid and then all of their work, all of their effort is tossed aside. So I think that, you know, we get close to a new contract, we sit down with them, they've been a good tenant, we should be able to work something out, if we don't, then we put it out for bid. So I think the city's side on this is correct. I want to get back to the menu part, I just want to make sure Jason and I understand this 100%.
Yes.
Tuesday, they could put out a menu. Thursday, the price of beef goes through the roof. They can put out a new menu on Thursday. They can pretty much put out a new menu anytime they want, correct?
Yeah, the, I will look, while you continue to discuss this, I will look for the exact language on this. But yes, I will tell you, the regular menu is not, is not, they can do whatever they like with the regular menu, we have nothing to do with it, okay? I will describe what has occurred and why we added this language.
Well, let me just ask you this, so, because you may not need to go into that detail.
Okay, sure.
You're talking about a menu for catering events.
That's correct.
But they can adjust that menu at any time. I mean, you know, if they agree to cater an event and they give you a menu, they're going to stick to their prices. But three weeks later, they could say, gee, we lost some money on that, we're now going to up our prices. Or we, you know what, we can actually lower our prices. They have that option of just creating and updating that menu all year, is that correct or not?
Yes, I think, yes. What we're trying to avoid is selective pricing for events that they don't wish to hold.
Okay. And my other question is, since we've been talking about water meters, do we have a price on what it would cost to put in two water meters separately?
No, however, and thank you for the opportunity. We, our facilities manager, okay, the which is over all of the facilities that the city maintains, looked at the condition there, right? What the, what is entailed in that trailer and determined that it is not, the return on investment, he did not provide a cost, he didn't go have someone come out there and do that, but he looked at how the building is plumbed and said, having two separate meters for this would be very expensive to do. He'd have to basically retrofit the plumbing. But then, I think the really, the easy part to consider is that it has a shared bathroom.
Right.
How do you meter a shared bathroom?
Well, that's a good point.
Yeah.
And I mean, we have golfers coming in that aren't using their restaurant, that are using that bathroom. Our employees are using that bathroom, so it is kind of hard to split that up.
Now, I mean, I think you could easily say that, you know, the each, each user in the building is using some water, so that it's not like one, and we know that it's not one exclusive user that's using all the water. So, you know, if you determine that there should be some cost here in the water, then that's, you know, part of what we're asking for, to clarify the utilities.
Okay. I mean, it'd be nice to know how much to actually go in there and put in two water meters, to be quite honest with you.
I think they determined when they looked at it, that it would be so expensive, it didn't make sense to actually go try to determine what the cost was.
Are we talking $20,000?
I'm sorry, I asked him.
I don't know, because I don't have a number. You know, that would be, that would allow us to make that decision, do we want to spend that money to split those meters off? Or, yeah, it's a million dollars, we're not going to pay a million dollars. I don't know what it costs to put in a water meter. But I would think that somebody would be able to give us that price, I'd like to have that price. Going to the, I'm fine with the $10 a square foot. The 3% increase as opposed to 0 to 3%, can we expand that maybe from 0 to a higher percentage and reevaluate that every year based on what prices are, what the economy is? I mean, with what we've seen this year, I mean, prices have gone through the roof, you know?
Are you okay tying it to a CPI so that it fluctuates?
Yes, I think that's what we really need to do, so it's fair to everyone. Because, you know, I mean, I doubt things are going to go down much below 3% every year, it seems to be an average. And if, personally, if it was my business, I'd probably say, yeah, 3% is good. But if they're agreeable to tying it, you know, that would be fine too.
Sir, if, if you will, in the contract that we provided in February, it was a 0 to 3% based on the June CPI. The reason for the change was, one, came through the fair market analysis that a, you know, a consistent number was easier to deal with, easier to calculate. And some examples were provided to myself about how if you're, if you don't carefully identify which index you're using, that it can cause issues, you know, and I think an example of where, you know, the rent went up $100,000 for a large, you know, facility. But yes, yes, that's definitely a possibility, we can go back to, you know, the June CPI in preparation of a September 1 annual date, if that's what you would like.
Yeah, I'd just like to see if, have a little more flexibility with that. I think if you can split off the electric and what's been described to me as a very inexpensive way, that's easy enough to do, I'm in agreement with that. But again, you know, I do think neither party wants the elimination for termination for convenience clause, so that's fine, and I understand that they want that security. And again, on the hours, it's their candy store at this point, they're paying us rent, they should be able to run it the way they wish to run it. I mean, they're not going to close down when we got a lot of customers there, they're there to make money. So I think we need to let them make money, that's why they're there. That's all I have.
Mr. Di Lorenzo, thank you for, you and the city for putting all of this together. I know it took a lot of work and a lot of time to go through everything. I do have a few questions. The first one is, currently, the city is at a loss financially in what we're receiving and what we're paying out with the Green Lion location, is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir, the water bill is $2,000, but again, as we established, we don't know how to divide that. The electric bill averages $1,500 a month. The propane bill averages about $550 a month. And currently, the city pays all of those.
So to, as the Vice Mayor's point, we're actually paying the Green Lion to be there right now. It is not something that is fiscally responsible for the citizens of Palm Coast?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Reading through what, some of the comments that the Green Lion had there, there are some differences in the square footage of what they're willing to pay for. So the Green Lion had said that they're willing to pay the square footage of the whole porch. We were only holding them to half or a portion of the porch, is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, in the border notes from the amendment, from their attorney, they did indicate that they were willing to pay for the entire square footage of the deck. And thank you for the opportunity, because the reason why I did not include that in this presentation is that they didn't carry that down in the amendment to effectuate the cost. They maintained the 1,998 square foot, so there was a conflict in their own agreement, so I didn't, you know, include that here, but yes, that is accurate, they said they were willing to pay for the whole amount. Would you like the genesis of why staff proposed we reduce the square footage of the deck?
Yes, could you share that, please?
Sure. In conversation with the golf manager, he indicated that, you know, several times a week, that the golf groups, the leagues that play there, and when they have tournaments, they organize on a portion of the deck, which reduces the available space for restaurant tables on the deck. So in a realization of that and understanding that that is actual, actually occurring to their operation, we cut the deck in half and, I don't have it in front of me, but roughly 650 square foot we attributed to their permanent space for tables. And the 650 is more flexible space, sometimes we use it and most of the time they use it.
So I think the difference between the $9 and $10 a square foot, we're already there because they've already had talked about paying us for the full use of that porch compared to. So I don't think that's an issue. With number two, I agree with the CPI formula. Number four, I do think that they're providing a service to the people that are there to play golf. And I do agree that the hours should fit the service and the concessions for being there. So to not be open for those hours in the morning, when we do have golfers coming in, I think is not providing the service that we would like to see for the citizens that are utilizing that course. So that one, to me, is a bit of a concern. The elimination of termination for convenience, I think that's a two-edged sword. So it could work in favor of both the city or the Green Lion, but it also could work against. So if there was a different council here and prices were such where they could terminate it and put out for bid to get a much higher rate, it could work significantly against the Green Lion. And vice versa, if the economy did take a downturn, they could just walk away and leave us without, without a restaurant there. So I do feel that both sides have agreed to that and I think that should remain. I do agree that a five-year extension by mutual consent, I think if they're doing a good job and things are going well, that we should be able to very easily come to an agreement on that as well. And then also strengthening termination for cause, I think is important for the city to be able to say that if there is something that is not working, that is in violation of the contract, we should have the right then to be able to terminate that contract. I am all for working with the Green Lion and coming up with something that is mutually beneficial for both the city and the Green Lion. And I think we can do that, I think we're close enough. All right, Councilman, thank you for your comment.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have one more question. So my question is, how could we answer the question that we're paying more for the utilities than we're receiving from the Green Lion today if we don't know exactly how much water or electricity they're using?
Well, the electric bill is 1,500 and the rent is currently 600. And the propane bill is 550 and the rent is 600, so I think we can safely say that we are not collecting as much as we're spending.
But that's for the entire golf clubhouse operation, including the restaurant?
Yes, but we don't use any propane, only the restaurant does, and that's, you know, 550 out of $600.
Yep, and on the new agreement, for sure, I think both parties do assume that the propane should be paid by them. I, yeah, I don't imagine, maybe heating and the, propane isn't used for heating inside the facility there, fair enough. But the water is a sticking point for me because that's a, how much was the bill each month?
$2,000 per month, and that's just at that facility. The golf course itself has other locations where they have water meters, like the cart barn is a separate meter, right, because they're washing off the carts. And then there's, you know, on the electric side, there's different locations that have pumps that draw water out of the retention ponds and then they use, you know, for irrigation.
Gotcha. It's just the water usage, it just seems to me like that could be tumultuous in the way that it gets divided as far as consumption. Just thinking, I mean, that's a lot of water that's being consumed there, is it all from the restaurant? Is it from the water? You know, I fill up two big styrofoam things with water every time I go out there. Is it from the bathrooms that are flushing, five gallons of flush? I don't know. But that would vary the answer to the question of whether or not we are exceeding, you know, expenditures of the entire golf facility versus what we're retaining in rent per month. But, okay, I was just curious about those things, thank you.
Mayor?
Please.
Councilman Danko asked me a question while you were out, and I have an answer for you now.
Okay.
On page 49 of your backup, it's section one, letter C, it goes to the catering menu, okay? And it says, "At least one time per year, comma, tenant shall publish a menu of catering options," and then it continues on. So, yes, the answer to your question is yes, they can publish it more than one time per year.
They can, so they have the flexibility, they're not locked into one menu for catering and they're stuck with it. They can change it as they're busy. They can change it as their business needs require them to change it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let me just, let me make a comment before I invite the, the Green Lion to, to make some comments. And let me, let me say this. So city council is, albeit slowly, stepping forward to consensus in, in, in some, if not all of the areas. So my personal experience, I come from a very long career of negotiating contracts in the state of Florida, throughout the United States, and all around the world that are infinitely more complex than the agreement that we are struggling through today. The one thing I've learned from all of that is that the only way this agreement survives is if there is value for both parties. So there must be value for the city of Palm Coast and its residents, of course. There must also be value for the tenant, for the Green Lion. Otherwise, there's no reason, and I promise you, if there isn't value on both sides, the agreement will not hold. It will not last, and all of this discussion will be for naught. So I urge you, and one last point, I will say that city staff has invested an inordinate amount of time and effort to get us to this point today. They have worked at this. They have negotiated in good faith with, to the best of their ability, time and time for a very long time. I'm of an opinion that I would like to see a conclusion to this discussion at the earliest possible moment. I am agreeable that if we can give direction on the top-level items which council pointed out before, and perhaps then allow staff, city manager, to negotiate the, the finer points, which will not have a significant effect on the income produced or received. That's a pathway forward, but we're gonna ask for consensus. I think it would be appropriate now, if the Green Lion would like to make some comment now.
Are we entitled to questions?
Yeah, of, of course. Let them, you know, yes, with all decorum.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman. John Ferguson, Bob Cole. Mayor, Alvin, I couldn't agree more. I'm not quite sure why it's taking this long to get to where we are. And you're, you're spot on that it is an agreement that needs to be beneficial to both sides. Right now, what I see is the city has exactly what it wanted five years ago when it went out to bid. It has a great destination restaurant, number one rated. And, you know, and from my client's perspective, they have a contract. They, they have a contract in place that says they have the right to extend for five more years. It doesn't say that, you know, they have to revise terms, they don't have to pay more rent, they don't have to pay propane, but like you said, Mayor, it needs to be good on both sides. So there, there is no obligation for them to agree to any of this, but they've already agreed to pay fair market value. And, and we've heard, heard a discussion on what that is. They've agreed to pay the propane. If they're the only ones using the propane, it makes perfect sense for them to pay the propane. They've even agreed that, all right, if you wanna go through the cost of separate meters on electricity, that they'll pay that. Now, I would point out what Cornelia said on the appraisal is it was $9 to $10 inclusive of, of utilities. So really, it's not, if, if Green Lion is going to pay the utilities, it should be something less than nine or 10. But that's, you know, let's put that aside for right now. Another thing I agree with, I think if we get through a couple of the bigger gating issues, we're gonna have no problem reaching agreement on all these small things. You know, I am not a government land use attorney. I'm a contracts attorney. I represent businesses, I negotiate these deals hundreds all year long. It's a little different here, of course, being, being a city, and you guys having, having the, not, not having the ability to sit down at the table with me across the table and work things out. I have no, no doubt that your city attorney and I and the city manager can come to agreement on all these smaller issues. I, I do appreciate the direction, Councilman Danko, the, the direction of, you know, Green Lion is in the business to make money. It's American way. If there's service to be had at 7:00 AM, I know they're gonna be staffed at 7:00 AM. You know, if they need to have, if they need to revise their catering lineup because all of a sudden the price of shrimp skyrocketed, they need to have that flexibility. They have no problem. Right now, they've, there's been a lot of discussion on that. Right now, the catering menu is posted. And, and as prices rise or prices drop, they'll go up and down because they're a business. They're in it to make money. So what do I see as the options? I, I agree with the first two. Those are definitely two of your options. You can take either the city agreement, although the Green Lion is under no obligation to sign that. You could take our amendment. You guys are under no obligation to assign, to sign that. You could give direction to, to staff, and we sit down around the table, which I have no doubt we'll be able to do, and come up with a hybrid. But the fourth option is we do nothing, and we continue on in the current contract, which I don't think is in the best interest of the city, because you, you won't be getting all the additional things that the Green Lion has already agreed to pay. No, of course, the termination for convenience would still be in there. So with all due respect, no tenant, like I said, I do hundreds of these a year, no tenant wants to be able to be kicked out without cause. So the gating issues, you know, whether we have a new agreement or we do an amendment to the existing agreement, to me, that, that's a, that's a gating issue. Like I said, to preface this, the Green Lion has a contract. They've, they've exercised their right to extend that contract. They are more than willing to make these changes because it's a partnership. I, I apologize, I can't remember who, who said it, but it, it's a partnership that in order for this to work, you guys have to be happy with it and they have to be happy with it. So they're willing to make these things. So I just think an amendment is cleaner, it's easier, it's, it's easy to see all the changes. So that's, that's number one. The number two gating issue, duh, price. Price is, is always an issue. I thought, and I, I apologize for calling by her first name, Cornelia. If I had remembered her last name and I had a chance to look at my notes, I would've, I'd call her by her last name. I thought it was a very good presentation. I thought it was a very good analysis for a very difficult job. There are no, there was no comparables. I mean, she, she had to take, you know, bits and pieces of everything and, and put it together, and I thought in a very coherent fashion. $9 to $10 with, with electricity included. In my comments on the side, I, I love the little comments on the side of, of word documents. I think it's a great way to explain provisions. My guys are, are fine paying the electricity separately if you're willing to do the cost. My understanding is that was expensive, but if it's not expensive, then fine, let's pull that out. We can determine what that is and, and adjust whatever that $9 to $10 should be if, if it stays in there. Like I said in one of my comments, yes, I put $9 in there and then put a little smiley face, I, the obvious compromise is 950. I mean, there was no reason for us to, to lose brain cells over that one. Third gating issue, size of, of the, of the lease premises, the deck. For four years now, the Green Lion, as a partner for the city, has gladly said, "Come use our, come use our deck. Don't charge." That's what, that's what partners do. We don't, and we're willing to pay for the full deck for the term. I mean, there's, they're, they're willing to do that because once again, it needs to work for the city, it needs to work for them. It's one of the things they're willing to do because also, some of those people may stay over afterwards. Why, why wouldn't they want those people there? Lease term, I think is also a, a, a big issue. And I think there's a little, a little confusion on some of the charts. My understanding is that at the end of this next five-year term, 2027, you know, what my client would like to see, if they're gonna be paying fair market value rent, you know, the increased rent payment plus the electricity, plus the propane, plus everything else we're talking about, you know, a 10-year lease, you know, two, a five-year term, another five-year, is pretty standard for a fair market, for a fair market rent or a fair market lease. I understand what you're saying about, well, and that at five years, in August 27, it's bond of mutual agreement. If the last 13 months are any indication, that's easier said than done. My recommendation would be, would that, you know, we have the same provision that at the end of this, this five-year term, the tenant, if they're not in default, and I'll get to the cause, I have no problem with the cause, you know, if they're not in default, they have the right to extend it. The only question is, is what is their fair market value? Why can't we simply do what we did, did here? Hire a third party, independent third party, let them tell us. And that way, both sides are protected, and the tenant here has an opportunity, a 10-year period in which to invest in their, their business, because as the term shrinks down, any business is less likely to invest money. One thing that wasn't discussed, and I think is very important, and, and I would love to get some direction from, from the council. Friday night, staff sent my clients an email asking for all their financials, and they cited, they cited the RFP. Now, of course, the RFP was issued six years ago, the response was made five years ago, contract was signed five years ago. The Green Lion has never given their financials, not to the prior administration, not to this administration. All of you are business people, I think you would understand that the idea of you turning over your financials to a public body where they become public record and every other restaurant in town can see your records is not really conducive to their, to the way they run their business. Now, if, and I totally understand this, if the rent was based on a percentage of revenue or percentage of profit, whatever it is, then by all means, you have to have the financials. But there, there's no, there's no reason on the lease why you need to have that exposed to public records. Councilman Danko, thank you very much on your comments on the operational issues, the, the hours of operation. There, there's some others in there, like, you have to charge fair market rate, you have to have a, an experienced manager. You think those things sound innocuous. From a contracts attorney, they're, they're not, because what it is, is, you know, charging market prices, okay? Someone comes in and says, "Oh, I, I bought a cheeseburger down the street for $2. They're charging me $3." And all of a sudden, there, you have the citizens trying to tell the Green Lion what to charge. I would just say, let them run their business. You guys don't wanna run their business. And, and let, and let, you know, the public will tell the restaurateur what they're doing right and what they're doing wrong. Like I said, we're fine doing the, the propane, we're fine doing the sink, whatever, sink interceptor. You know, once again, that's, I, I personally think that's something that a landlord would normally provide, the sink interceptor. It's not a big issue. Those are the small things that I think once we get some buy-in on the bigger gating issues, that we can sit down, knock through some of these smaller issues. You know, termination for cause, no problem with that. Every, every lease I do in a commercial setting has termination for cause. Now, your council and I will sit down and walk through this, the particulars, you know, for example, you know, the right to cure, you know, not having it not apply to, you know, if you're a manager, God forbid, gets a DUI as a draft. And now, that, that could be a default under the lease, and the lease could be terminated. Remember, you guys with 500,000 employees? You can't always control your employees. But, you know, so some tweaks like that, which I have no doubt we, we can address. A 24-hour notice to, to be able to come onto the property, just like you would any other landlord in any other, in any other situation. And then the other issue that hasn't been discussed, and it's really something that maybe we'll talk with staff, but the dumpster is half a mile away, sort of hard to run a restaurant. And so would love to have, you know, you guys can't, from the, from the day, sit there and say, "Do this." But, you know, have, if we can have a conversation with staff on how do we improve the dumpster situation so that a top-rated restaurant can even improve their service even more? And so with, with those, I mean, I'll gladly answer any questions. They're here to, to, to have a, a good agreement back and forth.
Good, thank you for that. Vice Mayor, would you like to start with the questions?
I'd just like to ask Jason Di Lorenzo, if you don't mind. The dumpster I saw is right next to the building. Is that another dumpster?
Uh, no, sir. There's, um, there's an area for storage, fenced-in storage to, but that's just daytime storage, and then it's transported to the dumpster, which is located by the cart barn, by golf cart.
Okay.
However, thank you for the opportunity. We already addressed this with the tenant, and at the time when we were negotiating with them, we were getting ready to acquire the additional lands at the golf course. We have now completed that, and we told them if we were able to complete that and that we could look for a closer location, they would have to build the dumpster surround up to land development code, and they would then take, take over solid waste themselves because that would no longer fit under our solid waste contract that we have with our current provider.
Good. And talking about solid waste, I don't see there the cost of the solid waste that the restaurant produces. Do you have any idea how much it costs?
No, sir. Again, it's shared.
Okay. And it's, it's a bit. Now, my question to Mr. Ferguson is this, you, you mentioned that the CD sent an email to your, your client about financial statements. Actually, I've been asking since day one for an itemized bill of the $100,000 that was spent there on equipment. That's the only thing I ask. I want no other statements. That's the bill of what's there. If they don't wanna tell me the prices, they don't have to. Just tell me what's there, and then I'll find out what the prices are. That's what I asked for. So if you, if you understood that, that it was, it's not. I think that's, we, are we talking about the same thing, Mr. Di Lorenzo?
I'm not positive, sir.
Let's keep the conversation to the...
Yeah, no, but I just wanna make sure that...
But that's his attorney, so let him...
Yeah. Ask, ask him what, yeah. No, I wanna know what Di Lorenzo sent.
No, it, it wasn't from, from Mr. Di Lorenzo. It, it was a request for financial statements.
Oh, that's, that has nothing to do with it.
Correct.
Then I'm talking about something. But did you send that request for the, the itemized bill of the, the equipment that was there?
Yes, it included both, sir.
Okay, so my, my other part was only about that thing. And, Mr. Ferguson, I, you know, nobody, I don't think anybody here wants to hurt the Green Lion. I surely don't. And I'm not anti-business, like I've been saying. What I'm here for is to protect, actually defend, the citizens of this city. I would be so happy with the, an agreement that the city doesn't lose money. That's all I want. I don't want to lose money. That's how far back I am. I even mentioned in contracts before, our bills, water and electrical, which is the main that we spend there, in my estimated, my guesstimated, and I have good basis for that, wouldn't go over $600. Meanwhile, we have $4,200 expenses. Now, you show me, if you can, in any of this over here, where the city doesn't lose, doesn't lose at least $1400 or $1,500 a month? If you could show me that, just do it, please. That's all I want. That's all I want. I don't want anything else. Just show me where the city does not lose $1,500, $1,400 a month. That's all I want. And then if you could prove that to me, that the city's actually making money, then why do I sign? That's all I want. I want nothing else. I, listen, I, I insist, insist on this. If you want a mean burger, go to the Golden Lion. They have the meanest burger there. I was there in Cognito not long ago with some family that are over here visiting me, and that's what we had. I loved it. I think they have the greatest cook around. But the thing is this, show me where the city is not gonna be losing money, never mind making money. Show me where, and the contracts we have, that's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for anything else. And if my colleagues think different than me, please say it. That's all I'm asking.
To answer your question, I would point back to Caroline's presentation, where she talked about the difference on a concession agreement and, and the, the benefit to the public as opposed to a lease agreement. This is a highly unique property. Like I said, there were no comps, there were, you know, if you're saying that you would rather not have any restaurant there, because any restaurant there can, can only pay so much because of the number of people that go through there, and because of the condition of the facility, because of the size of the facility, because of their strengths, you're not gonna be able to get someone in there paying more than, than what we're talking about here. And so it's a concession agreement. So it really is also providing a service for your residents... really is also providing a service for your residents, because they want, when they go to the golf course, they want to be able to stop in afterwards, like I like to do, and have a beer.
I agree with it, so if you're comfortable with the city losing money, I don't know about my colleagues, but I'm surely not, I'm sorry.
Well, and, and the other thing is, you say four-two-hundred, but that is the total price of propane, which...
That's including...
Which, which they've already agreed that to pay, so let's take that out, and we've already agreed that they're not, the water, there are a minority use of the water, now, electricity, I don't know, I mean, I have, I have no clue about electricity, sorry.
Been there quite a few times, sir.
So, Vice Mayor, let's pose the question to Mr. DeLorenzo. So, you've projected this agree, these scenarios out for some number of years, so is there a break-even moment?
Uh, can you clarify, sir?
So, three years from now, are we breaking even, five years from now, are we breaking even? Is our expense reducing each year as we go forward, based on the, assume CPI increase expenses?
Um, because we base the, because we base the pricing on the fair market analysis, we did not consider that, we just started with the, with the ten dollars a square foot as proposed in the analysis, and added the, the three percent increases annually, we did not analyze for a crossover point, particularly since we cannot determine the cost of you, of the water, and we have not determined the cost of electricity.
So, are you of the opinion that the agreement can be tailored to reach a break-even point? The, the one difference I have with Vice Mayor is that cities should not be in the business of, of being in business, in other words, I would be satisfied if I knew that we were approaching, as rapidly as possible, a break-even, so that the cost of the operation is not weighing on our residents in any way. So, is that foreseeable in your calculations?
Well, I think if you start with the propane, right, and right now, we're, you're paying between five and six hundred dollars a month for propane, so you just start there, and you put that into the tenant's category, we've made a significant impact in, into the cost basis.
All right, so way, way too complicated, counselor.
Yes.
Can you help us get, you understand the break-even point?
Yes.
There's nobody up here that's going to be okay with putting a, a burden on the taxpayers for another business to make money, that's, it doesn't make sense. So, can you see your way to negotiate to a point where we will have a break-even amenity, a nice amenity, that's not costing our residents money?
Is that all we're good for, break-even? Is that all we're good for? Is that how we defend the people upon coast?
Vice Mayor, we're, we're not, we're not a profit model, we're a municipality, we're not in the business of, of making profits.
Get rid of the golf course, because we're making money there now.
And, and we, we weren't a few years ago, but we are now, thanks to previous...
Can I just, can I respond?
I, I cannot understand what he's saying.
Hi, I hear you what you're saying.
Identify yourself for the record.
My name's Chris, Chris Marlowe, Green Lion Cafe, uh, thank you, everybody, for coming. Um, okay, you don't want to lose money, you want to break even, I get it. How much is the water bill?
Asking me?
Yes.
Can I answer?
I, I, I don't...
Can I answer?
No, I want you to let...
Well, I know.
You said it was two thousand dollars a month, how much is the electric bill?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred a month, so that's thirty-five hundred dollars a month, we've already agreed that we will pay for the propane, right, thirty-five hundred a month. No one in this room can figure out how to share the cost or split it up, I think the fairest way to do it, we're like roommates, right? You pay half, we pay half, no one can argue with fifty percent right now, to be completely honest, I am sure that we use less than fifty percent, but let's just say fifty-fifty, that's seventeen hundred and fifty dollars a month, right? What is our new, what are we proposing for our rent? How much?
I don't know.
Sixteen fifty-five, Chris.
So, by year two, within thirteen months, sir, you will be making a profit.
Thank you.
That's all you wanted, right?
Hey, Chris, Mr. Marlowe, can I ask you a few questions?
Yes.
And first, I, I want you to know, I grew up in a family restaurant, three generations in New York was in our family, I know how hard your business is.
Thank you.
I appreciate your offer of fifty percent of the water, I think that's fabulous, your financials are not needed, in my view, how you make money, you deal with Uncle Sam, you pay your taxes, you know, if you're investigated for fraud or something, you got to deal with it, but we don't need to publicize your financial, it gives you a big disadvantage as a business owner, when it becomes public record, I get that part. What I wanted, I also want to say that I realize part of the value that you bring to our golf course, our golf course is now finally becoming successful, profitable, and obviously, people come to play golf, they come to eat, you know, they, they don't just go there to play golf, a lot of times, they go there to have a meal and play golf, so you bring value, I get that part. I did want to ask about, your attorney mentioned the twenty-four-hour property visitation, I just, I, I think you're talking about if city staff just wants to go out there and look over something, but you obviously understand, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that if, you know, if inspectors go out there for another reason, they, they may show up unannounced, is that not correct? So, we're not saying...
You, you're correct, we're not talking about general city business staff.
Right, you're just, you know, we want to come out because we want to take some measurements, or we want to do some, whatever it is, you're just asking for a courtesy call. And the other thing I want to just throw out there, I understand you want to have, like, maybe ten years of, of having that guarantee, could we change this contract from five years to maybe seven years, and redefine what our first right of refusal is? In other words, I don't want us to have to put it out to bid, and then you guys come back and say, oh, wait a second, we can do a little better than that, I want you guys to say, you know, it's almost the same thing, mutual consent, you know, we're going to have the first right to sit down and negotiate with you, I, I think that would be a better way to explain that, because I think our counselor's point is very well taken, you know, and, and I don't want to see businesses go out and invest time and effort and money, and then have you guys come back, but I think if we just redefine what that means, it means that we're near the end of the contract, a year out, and you have the first right to sit down and negotiate with us, would, would that work for you?
First, you, you're absolutely correct, the city attorney was, was correct on the impact on bidding, goes back to me being a business attorney, dealing with two businesses, not with the government, so yes, that, that does not work. The concept of going from a five-year term with another five-year renewal, where the only thing, only thing in question was the amount, was simply the, the certainty that it provides a business, to be able to know that they're going to be there, they, they have the right to be there, be there for ten years, they have to give you a certain amount of notice, and, like I said, the last, it's, it's been a thirteen-month slog to get here, and so, would love to avoid that by simply saying, just laying out now, it's another five-year extension, hopefully, we can all sit down in five years, say, yeah, know what, the, the economy has gone through the roof, and so, know what, we're fine, because we know if we go to fair market value, it should be high, let's avoid all that, pay a higher amount, hopefully, that's what happens.
Okay. Well, I just, I just say this fifty percent offer on the water, I think solves a lot of our problems up here, as far as being able to break even, and, you know, again, you guys bring value to the golf course, so I know we're making some profit off of that aspect of it, too, so that's sort of where I'm at.
As a point of clarification, you, you made an offer to pay fifty percent of the water, is what I'm hearing, yes? I, I want to clarify that.
No.
Okay.
It was a break-even analysis, right? Mr. Brankino said, all I want is for the city to not lose money, so he told me that the water bill for the entire property, for both the golf course operations and for the restaurant operations are two thousand dollars. So, I said, hey, right, how much is that? Thousand bucks, thousand bucks, we split the, the, the electric bill, so now we're at fifteen hundred dollars, and now...
But you're, you're green, to pay that.
So, more, more importantly...
No, I mean, I think, I, I think if, if I can maybe, I think I understand what you're saying, in that you, if you look at it as we're splitting the water utility, and you're paying your electric, and that's X amount in the propane, that gets to the same number that you're paying per month for rent.
Yes, I, I understood.
Okay, I, I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
Is that, that's what you were saying, so you get to a net zero, whatever it is, like, in two years from now, and then, as things increase by a certain percentage it's laid out, then anything over, and that's assuming that the utility bills remain the same over an extended period of time, and there's no increase in the cost of electric or water, which rate changes happen, so I don't know that we can necessarily say that, but, in, I think in simple terms, that's what you meant, right?
We're paying you the increased rent, how you handle the money, where you can dispose the money, is up to you.
So, it's not, so...
But that can go towards the deficit that you have.
Right, I understand. Does everybody understand?
I, I, I think I understand now, but I just want to get a clarification from Jason, is the water bill for the entire golf course two thousand a month, or is it just for that facility?
Just for that facility.
Just for, so it's not the entire golf course?
No, it's not the whole property.
Clubhouse.
It's just, it's just the clubhouse.
Okay.
Okay, additional questions while we have counsel up here, anything for him right now, because we're going to move to public comment next, so, okay, thank you, thank you. So, at this time, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the discussion, and Mr. McDonald, thank you for your patience.
Oh, God. Okay, Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. To the folks in the audience who own the Green Lion, I'm going to tell you something, and you may not like it, but I'm going to tell you anyway. You're crazy, you're crazy, you're a tenant, you don't own the restaurant, you don't own the building.
Mr. McDonald, please, you, please, bring your comments here.
You're a tenant, okay, so, Mr. DeLorenzo was talking about how much money it's going to cost, oh, no, we, we, you're going to shut that clock off, because if the lawyers, if the suit gets up and talks, I can talk.
No, this is public comment, you have three minutes.
So, Mr. DeLorenzo is quoted as saying that it's going to cost X amount of thousand dollars to replace the water meters, these folks don't pay that, we do, we're the owner, you own the building, perfect example, I own a, I rent a house, if the hot water heater goes, I don't pay it, the landlord pays it, well, why should these people be paying for a water meter? You own the building! Okay, so, we're talking about how much money is the city paying every month, the vice mayor says he wants to break even, we haven't broken even on that property since the day we, we got sandbagged and somebody gave it to us, we've been paying, we lost, I don't know how many millions of dollars when Kemper ran the place, now these people are coming in, and they're making the place a good place to be, but they shouldn't be paying for half the crap that they're paying for. So, when you sit down and renegotiate this contract, remember, you people are the owners, they're the tenants, they don't pay, they pay rent. It's just mind-boggling that we're losing money, and, on something that we own, but we rented out, so when you made the contract, and there's only, I think, Mr. Coofers is the only one that's probably still part of the original five years, nobody thought that we were going to lose money, oh, we're going to make lots of money, but we've been losing money since we took over that golf course, and now, we're still losing money. So, guess what? Either they're going to have to raise their rent, because six, Mr. Danko said, oh, six hundred dollars is ridiculous, it is ridiculous, but what are we going to do? How much money are we going to charge these folks for a new contract? That's what I want to know.
All right, thank you, next speaker, please.
Hi, Chantal Pruninger, my head is spinning, I really have trouble understanding you, concessions, subsidies, on a golf course, public use, by whom, service to whom? Why has the city been providing low rent and paying for the utilities, like, around four, four thousand dollars for what looks like a private business, and that benefits possibly only the wealthiest part of the population? Who is paying the water bills? Palm Coast Water is the most expensive in the area, is that resident tax money? We are not roommates with a golf restaurant, we just bought a new bill, and I can guarantee the water meter didn't cost us more than the house. If you agree to pay all I heard, who else will knock at your door and ask for such an agreement? By all means, let those people pay their own bills, let them pay their own rent, their utilities, and that should be no business, no city business, those who can afford to play golf can afford to pay a fair price for their meal.
Thank you for your comment, is there another speaker that would like to comment now?
Maybe that's better, Walt Hooker, I think the Green Lion is a great place to have a meal, I don't play golf, I don't know what the greens fees, cart fees are, I don't know if the golf course itself is making money at this point, to Mr. McDonald's comments, I'm assuming the Green Lion is making money because they're still there. In terms of the rent, I think the, the CMA was ten dollars a foot for utilities included, what I heard was that Mr. Marlowe said might be willing to entertain a percentage of water and electricity, rather than charging a dollar amount, they were going to pay the propane, which I believe is five fifty a month, so whatever the water is, whatever the electricity is, I think if you just work out a percentage, whether it's fifty-fifty, sixty-forty, whatever both sides think is fair, I think that would be a better way to go than trying to say so many dollars, just say a percentage and agree on the percentage, so if the prices go up or go down, I don't think they're going to go down, but if the prices go up, you're not talking dollars and cents, you're talking about a percentage of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, is there another speaker that would like to comment at this time?
Gary Kounis, C-section, make this simple, put in too many water meters, subtract the amount from the men's room and lay down the toilet, subtract from the main amount, and you'll have your total, without splitting, without any hang-ups, two meters, too many meters, that's all you need.
Thank you for your comment, are there any other speakers that would like to comment at this time? Seeing no one approach the podium, I will close public comment, and we will come back to the dais. Vice Mayor, you want to start off?
Yes, I just want to remind, I, remind my colleagues of the expenses we had with that place. In 2019, we paid Mead and Hunt twenty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine and twenty-four cents for clubhouse improvements. 2020, we paid pole-covered construction, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, eight fifty and thirty-seven cents, that's when that air conditioning leaked and the floor went completely broke, we fixed it, we paid a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to fix that. We paid $178,000 to fix that. This goes to say that we're not abandoning our tenants. And then, in 2021, we paid, again, Mead and Hunt at the clubhouse, $36,726.19. And then, we had the water station on top of the deck. Rightfully so. Green Lion didn't want it there. We moved it down. It was an eyesore and they decided that they didn't want that in front of it. We spent $49,158.69 to pole cover to move that machine out of there. So since 2019, we spent, in that course, $285,608.49. We're not abandoning our clients. We're not. And if after this is set, my colleagues don't think that we should at least break even. Because even if you go 50% of the water, which by the way, $2,000 bill water, other than the bathrooms, that clubhouse uses no water. Clubhouse uses no propane. Meanwhile, we've been paying for it. Clubhouse does not spend $750 a month with computers and lights. That's inconceivable. And then, the amount of solid waste that we create, if we're going to pay 50% of that, I have no idea. Have you seen the amount of waste there? I've been there many times. I've been looking at it. And then, a reminder from my colleagues, if we agreed to something that will lose money, remember one thing. Last survey showed us why governance was the lowest in the totem pole. Let's make the people of Palm Coast be proud of us, because lately, they're not too happy with us. And we know it. And if we're going to add this decision to the decisions we've been making in the past, recent past, then I don't know if I belong here. That's it.
Councilman?
Absolutely. I would like to also remind our counsel and my colleagues of a few things. Back in 2016, when we basically eliminated Kemper from management of the golf course, at that point, I believe the number was something around, we were negative almost a quarter million dollars a year. And with the tremendous effort of city staff and oversight from tremendous city management and just having the right people who are capable of doing the right job, we make money at the golf course. Is that, is that correct? We are net positive, even though that's reinvested back into our general fund, it's not like we're distributing the money to, for profit, but is that right?
I'm, I'm not exactly sure, but I think we were pretty close.
Yeah, we're absolutely, absolutely. So we went from somewhere between a quarter million dollar deficit each year to changing the management, to having our own people, to actually even improving the golf course. But back in 2016, when this happened, there's a reason why we've had to spend almost $200,000 on this double wide trailer. It's because it's a double wide trailer, but also, it's fallen apart. It's just, I don't want to use the word dilapidated, because I don't want to be negative about it, it's just, it's got a great personality, is always what I say. And there's just a lot of work that needs to be done to maintain something like that, and I don't think we're necessarily abandoning anyone, and I think it's our responsibility to maintain the facility. And I recall when that golf course was closed, years and years and years ago, and the tremendous job that, you know, we've done to make it one of the best municipal golf courses that I've played in the state of Florida, to be honest. And it's just a high level facility, when you come off the course and you have value added, where there's live music playing, you have the option to get, you know, dinner, lunch, whatever, whatever, you know, your fancy is, there's value there, and the facility at that time did not necessitate anyone else to even place a bid on this contract. And there's a reason for that. And today, it's very easy to go there and say, I could make money at this facility for sure. But at that time, the city was looking for a partner, and the Green Lion was the only willing partnership that stepped forward that said, we also believe we're able to make a success out of this. And that was a huge leap of faith on both parties, and I would say that's probably why the termination, our choice to allow termination of the contract was basically because five years ago, we didn't know whether the golf course was going to exist from now. That was really, because we were losing a quarter million dollars a year, we didn't want to keep having taxpayers pay a quarter million dollars a year to a facility that they don't necessarily use. So the reason for termination being in there is exactly that, in my opinion. And I was sitting on that council, I voted for this transaction to happen, this ordinance to happen. So I'm, just for posterity, want to ensure that everyone understands, today at the golf course, we are breaking even, whereas five years ago, we were losing a quarter million dollars a year. And that's a tip of the hat to the tremendous city staff and the tremendous city management that has taken over and really provided the, honest to God, heart to heart, it's one of the best municipal golf course experiences you can have in the state of Florida. And I just want to give that perspective, because it's very easy to walk into the facility now and say, wow, this is, this is the tops, yes, but it wasn't. And we have to remember the perspective that we were coming from five years ago, and that today, we are not losing money for residents with this amenity. But at the end of the day, it's still an amenity, and breaking even is something I absolutely would like to strive for, but that is an unusual circumstance in city and municipal instances where we're actually trying to break even, or there's, you know, loss recovery is one of our strategies. So I just wanted to add, for posterity, where we are today with the financials of this facility, and just give perspective about what it was like five years ago when no one else was even willing to try to work with the city, even though that, you know, we look now and say, wow, those were favorable terms, but it was in a facility that was $200,000 ago in improvements, and the course was not in the shape that it is in today, and I can attest to that. So I just want to offer that perspective to my colleagues as well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Danko?
I would just like to see staff go back and work out some of these finer points and come back in 30 days, and maybe we'll be a little closer. I, I'm confused about one thing. We've kind of, they were willing to pay for more space, but we kind of took some space away because we host events. They've been uncooperative with the events that we've hosted in the past, or have they been very cooperative?
No, sir, it was just a, as far as the space goes on the deck, it was just a realization of how the operation works and that, that was table space that they were losing regularly, and we, we were willing to account for that. That's, that's really where that was. As far as the, if they were uncooperative, I'm sorry, I can't answer that question, I don't.
I've never heard any complaints, I've heard that they've welcomed all of the events that we were having, because it brings them more business. So, but anyway, I think you've heard a lot of points from us tonight, and I think we've reached some close to consensus here. I understand Councilman Burkino's concern about still losing money, but I am convinced that the Green Lion does bring in money to our golf course. Whether it's a wash or not, I'm not sure, I don't have the books, but, you know, I've heard a lot of people tell me, you know, they go there to eat, they go there to play golf. It's the whole package that brings people there. And, and it is a great amenity that our city has, and sometimes we do pay a bit for amenities. So I'm sort of on board with what Councilman Klufis said on this. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman.
So, I, I would hate to continue to belabor this. I would like to see us maybe try and reach some type of consensus now, they're in the room, we're in the room, we're pretty close. I think there's a negotiating point of they're willing to pay for all the space on the porch, we're willing to pay for a portion of it, so there, there's a little movement there. I would hate to see us have to come back and do this again in 30 days. I, I don't see where we're that far apart. I think it just has to be mutually beneficial to both sides, and I think it, it does have to be at, at least of a neutral cost to the city. We can't run it at a deficit, that's not fair to the, to the taxpayers of the city. I don't think we need to make a good profit, because they are providing a service to our community and to the golfers, and I, I think it's mutually beneficial to everybody.
So let me try this, if I may. Council members, we've heard, and I'll rely on counsel and counsel, within 24 months, can this contract be written so both sides will agree that we will, and neutral is a good word, city will no longer bear any additional expense in the operation of the Green Lion? So let me make it very simple. All the bits and pieces will have to be negotiated, but let's just, Councilman, is that something that you would be in favor of?
Something I would be in favor of, absolutely, and I think with the simple math equation that we provide, that we worked through earlier.
Well, simply yes or no will work on the consensus piece. Councilman?
Until you get the utility solved, you can't do anything about it.
Would you be, would you be willing to accept if, if they were able to prove that we're at a neutral or a net zero? In other words, it's not, the amenity is no longer costing the residents of Palm Coast additional money? Money?
Ah, is that our aim? Is that what we aim?
I'm just asking if, if that's something you would agree to?
No, I would not. And remember one thing, I just.
Yesterday was easy.
Something very, you just said something very important. They're willing to pay for more, you know, square footage, which is the 600 square footage, okay? But the thing is that, once they pay for that, we can no longer, if they want, we can no longer hold our Wednesdays, Fridays and Saturdays tournaments, which by the way, the league, the men's league up there, on Wednesdays, they start at seven.
All right, fair, fair point.
And there's a lot of money coming out of there.
I think we can, I think we can ensure, I think if we were to do the entirety of the square footage, we would add in language that would ensure that the parties would work cooperatively.
Valid point, good point.
And we could share the deck space as they'd been accustomed to doing.
Councilman, your term, now, starting here, neutral?
Yes, yeah, if we can get to neutral, I think.
24 months. Councilman?
Yes, if we could get to neutral in 24 months, I'm very much in favor of it. And again, I think the Green Lion has been a good roommate, so I don't think, and anticipate any problems with the space issue.
City manager, can you direct staff based on the consensus that we have, at least at this moment, to complete an agreement that would be a neutral or net zero expense to the city within 24 months from whenever that agreement is, is executed?
That's a clear goal for our staff, thank you, Mayor.
Counsel, how do, how do we, how do I proceed with this?
Yeah, just, just so I'm clear. Is that, so what we're talking about here, what you mean by net zero in 24 months?
No additional expense to the residents of the city of Palm Coast.
Okay, from a, so that's taken into account, we will look at the shared utility, who will pay for what, and then we will assess a value or percentage of that, and we will try to get to that in their rental amount.
Acceptable to the, to the tenant as well.
Okay, yes, I understand.
So I, I just need an nod from the counsel or from the tenant, that's the goal. Counsel, do you want to come up and comment real, just briefly, though?
We'll be losing money for the next two years. You agreed to lose money for the next two years.
So my, the consensus I'm asking for is, I believe that it will take 24 months to achieve it. I don't know another way to achieve it sooner.
Why not now?
I, I don't think it's possible, so that's why we're doing consensus, so you're not in agreement, I accept that. Councilman?
Yes, sir, we, we're fine going through that goal, 24 months of finding a way to get to break.
Neutral.
Neutral, so, yes.
So we understand?
Yes.
Counsel, you understand?
Yes, I understand.
Okay, so how should, so how does this roll forward with city manager and her staff?
So, well, there's, there's, it's of the option of the city council. If you want to see what the terms are worked out to get to that goal, again, it can be brought back for the city council to review and approve. If you want to not see this again and have your staff go and negotiate and finalize it with this direction, you can give the city manager the authority to do that.
So it would be city council's decision if they wanted to motion that at this time?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we give staff 30 days, 45 days, whatever they need to bring that goal back to us through negotiations, but I think it should come back to us.
I, I would concur with that, I would second that. For codification, I think we should at least have another overview that kind of provides the transparency necessary, give another chance for public comment, both sides, staff and the Green Lion's representation.
So there's a motion?
And a second.
And a second, so, a comment?
Question and a motion, I don't think we should lose money for the next two years. What we're doing right now is we telling people out there, and remember, I, I don't know how I can, for the life of me, for the life of me, I don't understand how we are doing this to the citizens of Palm Coast. We are the lowest in a survey, governance, the lowest, and we sink in ourselves by doing this. Tomorrow, you're going to see, council, going to give two years, they're going to lose X amount, X thousands of dollars a month. And then, you're finally going to break even. When I said, I wish we could just break even, it's not to take the money from the golf budget. It's coming out of them. Mitch is going to be fuming, poor guy, he's a good worker, but all of this money is coming out of his budget. So all those golfers that we have there are going to be paying for this. They're the ones who are going to be paying for this. Is that what we want to tell the golfers, that they're going to be paying for this? Is this how we change our mind? From people at Palm Coast getting robbed, the sweet deals, and suddenly, this is good enough for us? With all due respect, we ought to start thinking about it, then we motion this, we motion this like there's no tomorrow. I think we should think of the people of Palm Coast. Okay, we should think of the people of Palm Coast, how are we going to tell them to their faces, hey, hey, we like the guys, they have a good restaurant, which I believe they do, they have a great restaurant, we have to think of them and, and just, you know, let's, for the next two years, we're going to lose money, and then we're finally going to break even, and from there on, we're going to break even. We are in the golf business, we finally got that golf course in a situation that we finally get players to go there, they don't want to go no place else. Remind you, if we get that men's league pissed, we're going to be losing money heavily, heavily. Think about that. The men's league and the ladies league are keeping that golf course afloat. The minute we, we mess with them, they go, they could go anywhere they want. And then think about what you're doing. Right now, you hurting Palm Coast, and you know you hurting Palm Coast, and you keep on going about it. I don't think I belong here like this. I really don't think I belong here. That's it for me.
Okay. Any final comments?
I think we would begin losing money if we didn't have a restaurant there, and I would just bring that to the attention of Councilman Burkino, that there are folks that play golf and eat there, and it's the package that does attract some of that business. And there's a synergy there, and I, I think it's important to remember that.
All right, then I'll call the vote.
Sure, I would also just make one more comment, perhaps the message to the golfers is that with this new agreement, you'll be losing far less money than we are today, and with the goal of in two years, operating at a neutral revenue to expenditure model, it'll only be a matter of $100, hundreds of dollars for those timeframe until the 3% ends up kicking it up to where we're net neutral. I actually foresee if we were to continue with our current contract, that the delivery of that message would have to be much worse, because we're, we're improving our position with what we're doing today, so that's.
I don't think we need to vote, because we just gave direction for the next 30 days to come back.
We have a motion and a second, we've had discussion. Will the clerk please roll call the vote?
Vice Mayor Burkino?
No.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Finelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Klufis?
Affirmative.
Mayor Alpin?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Moving on with the agenda now, we will move to resolution number 10. If counsel would read that into the record, please.
Yes, this is agenda item number 10, resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, approving city council priorities for fiscal year 2022 through 2023, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Lauren Johnson, Assistant City Manager. We discussed the city council SAP Strategic Action Plan priorities during two separate workshops. We were here last week to reaffirm your priorities. Those are located in your agenda packet, Exhibit A, and also your legislative priorities. I'm here to answer any questions, or if you need to make any final modifications, be able to answer that, but just looking for approval tonight.
Councilman?
I have no additional comments, I want to extend my. I want to extend my gratefulness to the staff for all of the meetings and the collaboration that we've had, and also to our council. We were able to reverberate a few ideas back and forth, and I think we've come to a tremendous strategic action plan outcome.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Same here. Same here. I completely agree with it.
Councilman Danko?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
I think it's a good plan. Looks good.
Okay.
I have two comments. There's a reference in the strategic action plan regarding survey for housing. I'd like to expand that, that language to include all types of housing.
Okay, so as it's written right now, it's as a subsection of the priority. To ensure continued smart, sustainable, long-term growth of the city of Palm Coast, staff will develop a timeline and propose budget accordingly to conduct a comprehensive evaluation and appraisal report analysis to update a planning horizon of 2045. The objective in which you're referencing, Mayor, is in fiscal year 22, staff shall conduct a survey on resident feedback on multifamily housing in Palm Coast. And you would like that to say all housing?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like the survey to include all the different dwelling types. If we're talking about a comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan doesn't specify a singular type of dwelling unit. It describes all of the potential housing types. And if we're going to solicit comment from the public, I'd like feedback on, on all the various types.
Okay.
So I understand.
I'm just expanding on your thought.
Yes, absolutely. But you're not, you're not putting it all in the same question. You're gonna have, I, because I had three different questions. And one would be regarding multifamily, the other one would be building on lots less than 60, and then add yours. You could always add.
So, agreeable. So let's let staff come back with the appropriate questions.
Yes.
Fair enough? Okay. And then I had one other comment.
Sure.
It's actually from a resident. I thought it was a very well-thought-out comment regarding trails, the term multi-use as opposed to replace pedestrian, because our transportation planning organization funds trails that are for multi-use. They could be for pedestrian, they could be for bicycles, they could be for, I don't know, scooters, I guess, whatever, not electric.
Rollerblades.
Well, I don't think they're paved, but anyway.
So Mayor, the reference is in your legislative priorities?
Right.
The last sentence, which states this is a critical project, will further expand evacuation zone capacity, add, instead of pedestrian paths, say, multipurpose?
Yes, and the multi-use.
Multi-use, okay.
And the reason is, it opens up the funding possibilities that we could receive from the state dramatically if they become multi-use as opposed to just pedestrian. Opens up the floodgates for potential funding for the future.
Okay, I, I have.
Those are my only comments. So I, I'm agreement. Do we need a motion? Are you looking for direction, or?
No, I've made references for our copy and staff's copy, and we would just need council approval.
Yeah, we need a motion to approve with the amendments that were stated by the.
Do I have a second?
With, with the amendments?
With the amendments.
Okay.
And?
Other comment?
Yes.
So we have a motion. I would invite the public, anyone that would like to speak on the strategic action priorities at this time, please come forward.
Mark Lewis, Palm Coast. Thrilled to see that there's a plan to maintain our saltwater canals. Excellent. Hope that we get to see some progress, you know, monthly or quarterly or something as that plan evolves. Very, very happy to see that on the, on the strategic action plan. Happy that the survey was listened to, and thank you all very much.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address counsel on this item now?
Good evening, Greg Blasey, President and CEO of the Palm Coast Flagler Regional Chamber. Just wanted to come up here and say that the chamber strongly supports the strategic action plan. We've been closely following it for however many weeks it's been going on. I think y'all have done a great job working together on this, and I'm really excited about the direction that the city's going. The one other thing I wanted to share is, in case you don't get to watch all the B O C C meetings, but I've been going to their strategic action plan meetings as well, because they're in the same process. And a lot of what the city of Palm Coast has in their plan is also something that is being reflected in the county's plan as well. So I really think moving forward, not only do I think there's this plan a positive for the city of Palm Coast, but also for the potential of working with our county partners and in moving forward some serious region-wide initiatives. So thank you very much for your effort.
So, thank you for that. And I think we're always seeking a collaborative effort. City manager and county administrator work on a, on a collaborative basis, you know, on a weekly, so that all of the residents throughout all of the county enjoy the results and the benefits of a well-planned strategic action priority list. And the last comment I'll make for the public is that if you follow our council meeting and/or workshop agendas, there is a reference on each agenda item that pertains, when appropriate or applicable, to the strategic action plan. So you will be able to watch the progress of these plans as we go forward. They're tied together. So the plan is not a document that goes on the shelf. This is a working document that staff works with on a daily basis.
Yes, sir. And we will be back to council on June 28th with work plans on how staff looks to help achieve some of these priorities, and any budget implications as we prepare for the budgeting process for next fiscal year.
Good. And any remaining members of the public like to speak on the issue at this time?
I'm not sure I understand. What is it exactly?
Please, yeah, I'm sorry. You have to just identify yourself just for the record.
Chantal Pruninger. What is it exactly you're trying to approve as a strategic action plan? You didn't elaborate. We don't know what you're talking about.
So the, the agenda includes the entire strategic action plan, which was discussed at prior meetings. We went through them in great detail, based on the interviews with city council. Can you elaborate?
Sure. It's outlining the city's long-term vision, and council has identified 20 or so priorities in which they would like to accomplish that vision. And so staff is directed to create a plan on accomplishing those priorities. And they range from quality of life, economic development, long-term maintenance, and various aspects of our infrastructure. It's the city's long-term vision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other members of the public at this time like to make comment? Seeing no one approach, I'll come to, back to the dais. Any last comments?
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Clerk has the vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Counselor?
Yes, item, item number 11 on the agenda is the Beltair Pathway Bridge Rehabilitation Resolution. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, approving the terms and conditions of a construction contract with Custom Built Marine Construction, Inc. for the Beltair Pathway Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Authorizing the city manager or designated to execute necessary documents, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Showtime. This is what everybody's been waiting for.
Good evening. Guys, you doing alright?
Oh, yeah.
So, thank you for that. The Beltair Bridge and Pedestrian Path Rehabilitation Project, this project's been probably since I've been here around three years, and this project has been around, around that long to come to fruition. It's been recently sent out for bid. Thank you. Still knew this. This was previously sent out for bid, and it was shelf-packed because it came in over budget back then. And we made some, some adjustments, some value engineering. We sent it out for bidding. It still came back over bid, or over budget, I should say. But we're getting to the point and place where, you know, there's, there's pipes that need to get lined. There is a, erosion issues are constantly pass, happen there. So we need to move forward with the project. We needed to do some prioritization with other projects. So with that, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with this location. It's right next to Buddy Taylor, right on Beltair. Some of the project highlights, like I just mentioned, bids came back over budget. One of the things, if you recall, a few weeks back, we were here talking about a loan for stormwater, FY '22. This, this project was one of the, the projects that were for that loan. Another project that was for that loan was the, some drainage improvements in the K section. That other project is more of a phased project. So, you know, through prioritization, we're gonna shift some monies while the other one gets designed, maybe just to portions of it. Like I mentioned before, this project's gonna consist of doing some slip lining, excuse me. Some existing triple 84-inch corrugated metal pipes. This happens to meet the criteria for a DOT bridge and thus gets recurrent inspection through DOT and their consultants. The pipes have been around for a long time, since 1980s. And the last inspection that we've had on this one identified that we need to land is sooner than later. Other aspects of the project are to replace portions of the existing bridge surface, change it out from wood to concrete, finish. This will, you know, provide for longer life, lower the cost and frequency of maintenance.
Bless you.
Other highlights for this is, as I mentioned before, with the erosion issues, we're gonna construct swales and let them pipe structures. It's gonna reduce these erosion issues, and again, lowering costs and frequency of maintenance. And with that, do you guys have any questions?
Just a quick question, if you may.
Please.
Is this project going to create havoc or some disruptions on Beltair? And for, if it does, for how long?
Well, yes and no. It's, it's going to affect the pedestrian traffic through that bridge, that much is certain. Part of this project, as we work through what the, the contractors are gonna win this job, is they need to maintain the pedestrian open at all times, whether it be routing bikers, joggers, the kids through the other side of the road, or, you know, providing some sort of in-between, you know, access that they can get out, some safe. So we still have to work that out with them. We have to obviously talk to the school as well, see what works out best. So yes, as far as traffic is concerned, it's minimal, since we are slip lining those pipes, there's no open cut. There's no rerouting of traffic. There could be in, you know, an hour or so that maybe they have some vehicles in one lane only, you know, we will have some cones and whatnot. Something that's much more manageable. But it, it's not gonna affect traffic. It, it could affect a little bit the pedestrian, bicycles, et cetera.
Mainly the kids, that's.
Yeah. Well, you know, so also, we, we thought about that way back, so we, we're trying to coincide this with school, summertime. So schools will be closed for the majority of this. I understand there's still summer school, there's still joggers, there's still walkers, there's still a lot of other stuff, but, you know, maybe the main bulk of the kids going through there won't be going through there.
Good, good question. If I may, city manager, where there, will there be a communication and, I guess, a social media projection in advance of this work so that the community has its expectations set properly, so there are no surprises, and we can anticipate how long this project will take?
Yes, absolutely, Mayor. And actually, we do have kind of a playbook to read from because we did some work in this area previously, and we had an active communication plan that went down many of those channels and reinforced even through, you know, what's happening with coordinating the traffic. So sheriff's office, superintendent's office, you know, those are places we start and make sure we're, we're creating the plan together.
And I would just ask that you, you maintain updates. I assume the project will take some period of time, that the public is updated from time to time, so we kind of follow it through. Any other questions? Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this issue?
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. Correct me if I'm wrong. We're talking about the wooden bridge that's right before Beltair Elementary School, right? Didn't they just repair that bridge a couple of months ago? They had the Public Works Department working and repairing that bridge, because that bridge was closed for like a couple of months. So. And how much did that cost us? Because now you're gonna come in and hire some other company to, what, take the bridge out and possibly make it concrete? Why did we waste our time and money?
Understand the question. Let me have staff reply, because they have the background. Thank you.
Thank you. That's actually a very good question. And I, I did talk to, Public Works was the one that was in charge of doing that. And we actually had communication with them. They knew about this plan before they went out and did their repairs. So from, I don't know if I can show it here. It may not be.
Got some help there.
Have you heard?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council. So that is correct. Public Works did have a, a project out there to replace the boards on the surface of the bridge, and that was a safety concern that was brought up. A lot of the boards were aged to the point where they were creating multiple tripping hazards, and we also had a lot of rotting wood at the time.
So in a perfect world, you'd do it all at once, but it wasn't a perfect world, and you wanted to avoid accidents or somebody getting harmed?
That's correct, Mayor.
And, and just to take one step further, from what I've been told, the, if you see right there highlighted, this was proposed 10-foot timber walkway. From what I understand, that material's gonna be reused for the same path. Public Works now put some good stuff so that we can reuse that. Contractor will be instructed to reuse that material. The rest of it, we're actually gonna haul off and put it in our storage and reuse it for some other purpose.
Okay, very good. Any other members of the public would like to comment on this at this time? Seeing none, let me come back to the dais. Question?
Not whatsoever. Just to let you know that this is 42 years, so it's, it's about time that we probably do something about it. Forty-two years in the making.
Okay, I would accept a motion on this.
I'll make the motion, sir. Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Does the clerk have to count?
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. We've moved now, I believe, to the consent agenda. So... Are there any items on the consent agenda that counsel would like to speak about independently of the agenda?
No.
No. I would offer the consent agenda out to the public for comment at this time. Are there any comments regarding items that appear on this evening's consent agenda? Seeing no one approach, I'll close public comment. Any final comment from city council?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Does the clerk have to count?
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. At this point, at this part of the agenda, I would open up for public comment, public participation on any items not previously discussed on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to make final comment this evening?
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. Now that the owners of the Green Lion and whatever, they walked out, but anyway. Question. We talked about this 24 months. We understand that. We understand that, I don't know the exact figure, but we're talking somewhere around that the city is losing approximately $3,000 a month. Is that correct? Okay. So, we're still gonna lose until this new 24-month contract is up, are we still gonna lose $3,000 a month? And I'm also wondering, and I guess, I know the question has to go to the mayor, but this is a legal question. Can somebody explain to me how we can use public funds to pay for something that we own, but with, we're renting it out? And the renter is losing money? So we then, as the owner, we decide that we're gonna pick up the, the tab. So if their expense is at $3,000 a month, or $4,000 a month, and they're only giving us six, we're losing $2,500 to $3,000 a month. Now that money is coming out of all of our pockets, all of our pockets. So let's say it's $2,000 a month. I wanna know how, and this is the question for the city attorney, how can we justify to the residents that we're taking taxpayer dollars, that we're paying in taxes, and pay for something that is losing money? I just like somebody to explain to me how we can use, how we can justify paying and using taxpayer money to fund something that we're renting out. Now this, I don't know if this is the only thing we're renting. I certainly hope not, because that means we might be losing other money. That's my question.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment at this time?
You deserve it for sticking around.
Eileen Slate, I'm in the white section. I just wanted to bring.
Please, always, you'll identify yourself just so we have it for the record.
Eileen Slate, in the W section. I wanted to mention the fact that there might be mold upstairs, and I'm wondering if this is where I bring this. I was told that this was a public place to get the health of the people that are working upstairs. When we went for tour on the Citizens Academy, I could not go on the tour. Soon as I walked in to the area that they took us into first, my eyes immediately started burning, and I could not catch my breath. And the mold smell was so bad that I had to step out, and I could not go on the tour. I didn't know if this was the place to bring it, but if, you know, if we need, as the public needs to spend money for you all's health, you know, an inspection probably should be done.
Good. We thank you for your comment. City manager has a note.
Mr. Mayor, actually, I went on one of the tours with this group. I went to the, to our water treatment plant, which if you've never been there, guys, it's amazing.
It is awesome.
It really is. But you brought that question to my attention, and I brought it to our city manager's attention, and I think she has an answer for you.
So I'll start with, we treat our carpets, and I believe you may have encountered a recent residue smell, odor, from us treating our carpets at city hall. That question has come up a couple of times to me directly. That's my understanding. Mr. Mansell, are you, do you have any comment to add to that?
I'm not familiar with that specific incident of, of the carpet cleaning, but I was made aware that we did have the carpets cleaned prior to that tour. And sometimes we encounter incidents where we don't cycle the AC long enough after. So normally, we put it on an increased time cycle after carpets are cleaned to dissipate that extra humidity. And what may have happened is, it didn't run long enough. So I will check into that, and we'll make sure we correct it in the future.
So we don't have a mold problem? Oh, good, good.
All right. So obviously, we'll make sure that your employees and your residents are in a safe condition at all times.
Absolutely. Yes, Mayor.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public like to make comment at this time? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and we will move on to discussion by city council members, items that are not previously on the agenda.
Good.
Vice Mayor, would you like to start?
I, I got a, a couple of good things. And, but just for that, Mr. Bob McDonald, we are legislators. We just legislated that we could use public funds for that, so it's done. Now, Ms. Carcho, last week, we went to a ribbon cutting, and I want to thank you for what you did. You were phenomenal. The way you spoke to people, the way you guided me around, the way we had that tour, made me feel proud of you. And I was actually proud of you. And I said to the city manager that I would bring that up. She was phenomenal. Okay? Thank you very much, once again. Now, it's not the first time that when I'm doing my walking around East Hampton Boulevard, that I see a man, beard, white hood, it could be hot, white hood, knee braces, with two garbage bags, picking up garbage. And I approached him. When I approached him, he says, yes, Vice Mayor. I said, whoa, I don't know this guy from Apple. And he, yes, Vice Mayor? And I said, what are you doing? He says, I'm cleaning up. I'm picking up garbage. And sure hat, he had two garbage bags. He was picking up, since dog poop, that some people don't do, two, uh, two bottles and, and cans. And says, let me have your name, because, he says, oh, no, no, no. He wouldn't give me his name. That's how humble that guy was. And especially, maybe fire, or anybody from the city, if you could get me this guy's name, if you see him, he's always dressed the same way. If you see him, that he could come up with anything to help this guy, because I think he deserves kudos from us. Because what he, and then I asked him, why are you doing this? Because I love Palm Coast. And that, that was his answer. I think that's beautiful. So I did that. Now, I just want to answer someone who went on a local blog talking about my colleagues. And if you're gonna say something, come here and say it. Come here and say it in front of us. We could face it. And that person, which I think he had his name there, I think it was a he, and he had his name there, and he was accusing us over here to violate sunshine law when it was, when it came to the raises. Okay? I didn't want to put my name in there, because it's easy to find out who it is. I didn't want to put my name in there, but I'll tell you one thing. I doubt that any of my colleagues would violate the sunshine law to discuss salary raises. Because if we would do that, we would be despicable people, and we are not. We could have many things, but none of us over here is despicable to the point that we'd violate, violating the sunshine law and discussing the salaries out of this ambient over here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman?
I have no further comments for this meeting. I just wanted to thank the Citizens Academy graduates for sticking around and experiencing the full experience until 10:00 PM. So thank you, guys.
Councilman?
Yeah, I just want to thank the graduates for sticking around. You're welcome back every meeting.
Yeah.
And I hope some of you come back.
You're super graduates.
Yeah, super graduates.
Councilman Finelli?
It, it was great to meet all of you the other night at the fire station. I do have a few, Sunday is Mother's Day. Happy Mother's Day to my mother, my wife, and all the mothers out there. Also, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so if you get the opportunity, please thank all of our educators in Flagler County. We have some amazing, amazing educators, and it just, again, just adds to the, the beautiful city that we live in. I think that was about it. Thank you very much.
Very good. And I, in keeping with the theme that we had earlier this evening, just a simple thank you for those that you come in contact with, whether they be working, or neighbors, or whatever, goes a long, long way, so we could use as much more of that as we could find. So with that, um.
Motion to close this meeting.
No, no, no. Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry. When you said with that, I thought that was.
I'm, I'm going as fast as I can here. Does the city attorney have any final comments?
I do not.
Very good. City manager, would you like to close us out with comments?
I have no additional comments.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's a good one. You have really.